Let's see, uh, good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Board of Education for February 28th, 2018 to order, and we have a lot of people up in the dais that are present, but in terms of the attendance by Board of Education members, we take attendance, and I'll say myself, Philip Dwyer, Mrs. Jacobson, Mrs. Gerber, Mrs. Maxine Cannelly, Ms. Pitko, Mr. Peterson, Mrs. Vitale, and Ms. Leeper are all present. Mr. Acer is on his way, but he's running a little late. Could ask you to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, and if you would, remain standing for a moment of silence. The flags are on either side. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, to God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If you'd remain standing? We lost precious souls a couple of weeks ago that have brought renewed conversation on security in schools. That's one of the principal purposes of this meeting, and I think it, out of respect for the students and faculty down in Florida, if we could have a moment of silence. So again, welcome. Twice a year, sometimes more, the Board of Education holds town hall style meetings so that residents can come and ask questions or make a comment, and then we can have dialogue with them as opposed to a regular or special board meeting where we listen to comments, but we don't engage in conversation. So this was a regularly scheduled town hall meeting, which the Board at the urging of the Superintendent expanded to have the first part of the meeting, and based on the people in attendance, it could be the whole meeting, I don't know, we'll see, deal with the issue of school security. And so that is why we're here. We had originally scheduled First Selectman Mike Tetro to serve as our moderator, and that allows all nine of us, especially myself as Chairman of the Board, to participate as a regular member and not have to run the meeting. So Mike was already, I'm sorry, Mr. Tetro, was already here to be moderator of that meeting, but he will also be the moderator of the school safety portion of the meeting as well, and so we thank him for arriving, as well as we thank all of the panel members who are here, who can address questions or make comments that may be of concern to those who are in attendance. We have generally had a rule that will maintain that if you are, come to the microphone, it's a first come, first served basis, and if you would make whatever comment and question you have within three minutes, that would be very much appreciated, and if you only need two, only take two, because our goal is to get the maximum number of questions and comments from you, the citizens of Fairfield, as possible. The, a quick question. We had normally going, was going to have this for general questions on the facilities and finances and programs of the school district, so that I might gauge time as to allowing time for people who might have arrived for those reasons and not school safety. Are there people in the audience who are here that would like to be able to ask general questions? Because I'd ask you to let the first portion of the meeting be on school safety, and the second portion on more general questions. I see one hand go up, two, okay, three, okay. So we will make sure that we get to those three, or if it's four or five, that doesn't matter, at the second portion of the meeting. There is a sign-in sheet on the podium, and it will be very helpful to our secretary and to our staff who keep the records, if you will, in the minutes. If you would remember to sign the sheet when you come to the podium with your name and address, that would be very, very helpful to us. And normally, in a town hall meeting, it is the Board that is here and not the Superintendent. This is an opportunity to talk directly to the Board and not through the Superintendent. So depending on how long the meeting goes, you might find the Superintendent, as well as the balance of the panel over there, will move off the stage, and it'll be just the Board members here. With that having been, and last comment, on school security, while the Superintendent, the Police Chief, the First Selectman may be answering and responding to the majority of questions, there may be times where an individual Board member wants to comment on something, and so from time to time, you'll see them raise their hand, and Mr. Tetro will recognize them for a comment. With that being said, I turn the meeting over to the First Selectman, Mr. Tetro.
Good, good evening, and thank you, Mr. Dwyer. Thank you all for coming out tonight. As Mr. Dwyer mentioned, ground rules are pretty straightforward. We're gonna have two meetings, in essence, one on school security, then a slightly different format when we go to the town hall meeting. We're asking everybody to keep their comments to three minutes. Please be concise, and please do not duplicate what prior speakers have said. We want to be sure that everybody gets a chance to speak that would like to. We'd also ask you to realize that a number of the topics here may be a little emotional at times. We're gonna ask you to please be respectful of other people in your comments and in your tone. For the security panel discussion, we're gonna have some opening comments, first from myself, then Board Ed Chair, Mr. Dwyer, then Superintendent Dr. Jones, and then Police Chief McNamara. We will take comments from the audience. We're gonna ask the public to come up to the mic, as we said, state your name and address. Any questions on the forum, is that clear for everybody? All right, thank you. One final guideline. There are many important national issues and concerns when you think about everything that's going on in our country, and certainly the events in Florida are one of the reasons we're having this session here tonight. We'd ask you to please keep your comments and questions focused on issues in Fairfield. This is about the Fairfield school system, what we're doing, and what you, your questions or concerns are with that. This is not, this plays for comments on a national basis. And with that, I'm gonna kick it off by adding a few comments, and mine will be brief. First, two value statements. Frankly, I'm here and I'm commenting, because I want it absolutely clear that everybody knows that school security is not just a school issue. It's a town-wide issue, and as a town, we're committed to making sure our schools are safe. The second one is we owe it to our students, our teachers, our staff, that they have a safe environment to work in and to learn in. It was shortly after Sandy Hook that our prior Superintendent, Dave Title, Chief McNamara, our Fire Marshal, Kessler, Bill Kessler, and I held a presentation and discussion at Ward, at the Ward High School Auditorium. It was moderated by Board of Ed Chair Phil Dwyer, and we've worked together every year since to plan and implement a comprehensive security solution for Fairfield schools. It's involved more officers, more equipment, more training for students, teachers, and staff, more infrastructure improvements, better communication, and new protocols. The one thing we've all learned is security is not convenient. All right, it means changing the culture. It means changing the culture for our schools, for our students, and for our parents. This is not the school system that many of us grew up in and went to school in. We've made improvements every year. We've been tested a number of times. Our students, teachers, and staff have passed with flying colors. In many ways, we're a model for other towns in how to approach this issue. And importantly, we will continue to get better. With every event somewhere else in the country, we use that as a learning opportunity on what we can do better, what we can do differently, how would we react if that happened here. Chief McNamara may not quite say it this way, but I'm gonna take an opportunity to do it. And let me talk about the skills and training of our police. I've had a chance to go through the, some of the active shooter drills that they go through, and I've read about the news reports that are coming out of Parkland. And I don't know how else to say this. The Parkland deputies, based on all reports I've seen, do not have the skills, the experience, or training of the Fairfield police. Our approach is much more comprehensive and much better executed. We need to be grateful for the dedication and commitment of the Fairfield police in terms of keeping our schools and our towns safe. With that as an intro, I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Dwyer.
Sometimes, some of you might have heard me say, you know, I'm retired, why did I run for the Board of Education? My wife asks me that from time to time. And my answer has always been that my grandchild is up in Pritzford, New York, outside of Rochester, and there are nine people serving on a Board of Education up there, watching after a school district that is going to educate my grandchild. And so I think I have a responsibility to be down in Fairfield, watching after a school district on behalf of somebody else's grandchild or your child. And I'm joined in that belief by eight other members of this Board, and there have been nine members of this Board, past, present, and future, who deeply care about the quality of service that they provide to children. And they are fully committed to ensure those services, whatever they may be needed, to whatever child. My personal is I view security as a multi-layered issue. Certainly, the infrastructure of school buildings need to be attended to, and I'll make a comment on that in a moment. But we also have staff and student training, lockdowns, security drills, having a sense of making sure doors aren't propped open and all the rest. That's an ongoing issue that has to be attended to. And then finally, service to individual students who may be having a hard time, and you need to prevent school shootings by preventing the issues that cause some, unfortunately, the profile is young man, to show up at a school and act out the anger that's developed over years. And that relies on staff who can watch children and provide them the services they need. And so I think it's a multi-layered approach to school safety and not just infrastructure. Over the past, I'm gonna say 10 years, your district, your town, has spent a little over $7.7 million on school safety, infrastructure, capital improvements. Almost $7 million of that has been since Sandy Hook. I do want to compliment the First Selectman, the Board of Selectmen, the Board of Finance, and the RTM. As elected officials, they are accustomed to asking detailed questions to justify every dollar that we spend. When it comes to school security and safety, we have asked them to trust our Police Chief, our staff, our Board, that we are spending those dollars wisely, but we don't want to talk in a lot of detail on what we're doing and where we're doing it. In the year of Sandy Hook, we took a line item that was $100,000 and spent $750,000 to make immediate security improvements to the schools that we operate. And the town bodies said that makes sense. They supported that effort without, with a reasonable amount of questions, but not the kind of detail that they normally would go into. And we very, as a Board of Education, we very much appreciate the trust in the Board of Ed and the staff in wisely spending those dollars to improve the infrastructure of our buildings. So we are here to make a commitment, all nine of us, that we will continue to work on this and bring forth ideas as they come before us. So with that, I'll go back to the First Selectman.
Thank you, and next remarks are from Dr. Jones.
And first of all, I want to say thank you for coming out tonight. I fully understand how important this issue is, and I think the first statement that I just, that I want to say is there is nothing more important to me in the job that I do as your school Superintendent than keeping our children safe and keeping our staff safe. And I will say, I know parents right now across the country are extremely concerned, but I want to also really echo a voice for staff, because I don't think that necessarily in a lot of the communities, people understand how scared our staff are just to be an educator today. But that is the number one focus for me as a school Superintendent. There is nothing more important. I'm just gonna build a little bit on what Mr. Dwyer just said. As we talk tonight about safety and what we do with our drills and our practice, we get better all the time, and, you know, that's another thing that our teachers and our children have to learn to adapt, because unfortunately, every time a tragedy happens somewhere in the country, we learn from it. We change our practice. I was thinking earlier tonight, back when I was based in Oklahoma, which is really close to Colorado, when Columbine happened, and it had a huge impact for that part of the country. And when we first started doing lockdown drills, you locked your kids in your classroom, you never, ever left. So even though you could have had an opportunity to get away, we didn't train like that years ago. And we have had so much input from our law enforcement and really helping and guiding our educators, and I can't tell you enough, I've been in many school districts, not only overseas, but across America, and we do a phenomenal job here. And I am so, feel very, very fortunate to be running a school district where when we practice our drills, we have law enforcement there with us, basically grading us, giving us constructive feedback, and that does not happen in most school districts. The other question that I have had really in the last week or so is how can we really help and make a difference? And there are just two kind of components that I would say, I believe are very important. One is, be sure that you're talking to your children. The see something, say something is really important. And as many of you in this room, I'm sure, are well aware, well aware, there was an issue that was reported at Ludlow last night that we were working through. And I was leaving a Board of Finance meeting, and my phone started dinging, and it was our students, high school students, who had gone on the tips anonymous reporting line. That was exactly what we want to see happen. We had parents who were reaching out. So within hour, hour and a half, our law enforcement did amazing work for us. The second thing that I would say is making sure that you understand how important the operating budget is. Mr. Dwyer talked about the capital side and the improvements, and I'm not saying this, and I said this last week, because we're in the middle of budget season. I'm saying this sincerely. Our budget is primarily people. We need school psychologists, we need counselors, we need social workers. Again, not all school districts have that. And, you know, I went online just to see, in Florida, their high school of 3,100 students, and I just wanted to see how many counselors they had, and, and kind of measure that. I could only find five counselors. I'm hoping they had more than that, because that's a huge student to counselor ratio. And I think in Fairfield, we have been very committed to making sure that we're trying to keep our school staff so we can connect with our children. And I cannot emphasize that enough and how important that is. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Tetro.
Thank you, and just some final opening remarks from Chief McNamara.
Oh, I might be a little long, sorry. A little longer than the other opening remarks. But first of all, I think it's important that we're all here. You know, the events of last week in Parkland did a couple things for all of us. Number one, we were able to see, or you were all able to see some of the video from inside the school, and some of the experiences that the students had, which is really bad. And then some of your well-held thoughts might have come into doubt. Two of them in particular. One is, well, if we tell you about it, do we do anything about it? And, and again, you have to understand that investigations of this magnitude take a long time. So while there's preliminary information out there, you really have to wait until the whole body of work is completed to understand it. But just preliminary information that you get is that, that somebody did report, and, and the information wasn't acted on, and that's a strong-held thought in your all minds, in your minds, that, you know, you report something that's gonna be acted on, so that leaves doubt in your mind. And then the second thing is, well, you know, we hear the potential of an officer that didn't go into the building. And that's another thing that's gonna obviously lead to some doubt in your minds. Well, wait a minute, we thought that our officers were trained and they would go in, so it adds a lot of doubt. So it's important that we're all here to discuss some of your concerns and share with you some of the things that we've done. And I will take you on a very brief historical roll through school security. And the reason I do that is some of you have heard this before, as the First Selectman said, we were here right after Sandy Hook, or at Ward after Sandy Hook. But school security really is something that people pay attention to, depending upon where they sit in their lives with their children. So I'll just take you through a brief little history of it you might not be aware of. Obviously, we look at 1999 and the Columbine issue, and the incident in Columbine in 1999 that changed the way law enforcement does things. In the past, through some of the dynamics of Columbine High School, that attack and, and some of the issues that the attackers created, the approach was more to wait outside because of some of the explosives and the potential for, for more violence. So the law enforcement took a stance of waiting outside. After Columbine, we learned and waited for a SWAT team. Now, we, we have an emergency services unit that is more prepared than our street officers. They're more trained for more tactical incidents, and that's around the country. And that was the thought. You wait for the more trained, more prepared individuals to go in. And then after Columbine, the review kinda said, well, wait a minute, that's not really the best model, because kids are, and kids are, and staff are, are getting hurt, and, and some of them are getting killed while you're just standing outside. So the model has evolved, and the model now is you don't wait. If there is an active shooter, you go to the threat. The first officers on scene go to the threat. We equip our officers with protection equipment in addition to what they wear daily, but also additional equipment to face that threat, as well as tools or firearms that we believe can address some of those threats, and they're trained to go in and do that. Now, after Sandy Hook, if you all recall, and many of you are aware that many of the officers in the Fairfield Police Department were up that, there that day, but after Sandy Hook, if you recall, we did a blanket approach to every school. We had officers at every school, and we changed the culture a little bit. Doors were locked that weren't locked before. You didn't have access to the schools like you did before. We took some immediate action to address some of those issues that we felt would make the schools more secure. And then over a period of time, we evaluated how we can do this on a more stable basis, meaning that the world has changed, and as we know, events make us change. 9/11 made us change, Sandy Hook made us change. So we continue to evolve and change as the threats change. So we looked at how we can, and I know I'm summarizing for some of you that know this, but, but what we found is, and I was talking to Mr. Tetro yesterday about it, maybe some of you aren't really aware of some of the things we did. So we looked at it from a three-pronged approach. Our first approach was infrastructure. And I know Mr. Dwyer talked about it earlier. We increased our funding to do some more infrastructure to make our schools more secure. Why? Why? Because we know if we can delay access to the building, our officers will be there in a timely fashion. So if we can delay entry, and that's what we've done in our schools, we've taken steps to delay access to the building. We've also added procedures in that way. But infrastructure, we've taken other measures to address some of the infrastructure issues. Then we increased our presence. We moved around some of our resources within the organization, took an officer that was doing IT and put him back on the road and have an IT person that just does IT, and made some adjustments so that we can create a school safety unit. Lieutenant Waya is up here, actually Deputy Chief Liddy is here. Lieutenant Ed Waya is here who oversees the school unit. I will mention in the crowd is Captain Zaven from the Patrol Division, as well as Lieutenant Green from the Patrol Division, and Sergeant Jay Klein from the Patrol Division, who are also in the crowd. But we formed a school safety unit. Now, the debate was at the time, well, we need an officer in every school. And you've all lived this because there was debate throughout the state of who should go where, should we have armed guards? And our approach was that if we make a unit led by a supervisor, Lieutenant Waya at this point, it was Sergeant Waya in the past, and we put him in the district office. There's good communications there. We have two high school school resource officers, an officer at each high school. And then we have a contingent of officers, four officers, that divide up the elementary schools. And we felt, now obviously, resources are such that, yeah, would I, as a police chief, love to have an extra 15 officers? And we had that debate after Sandy Hook. But we felt that this model would work. So we adopted this model. And currently, we have those officers now engaged in our school safety unit. In addition to that, the third prong of this approach was communication. We felt that it was really important for our police officers to be able to communicate with the staff of the schools and the schools to be able to communicate with our police officers to share problems, to share incidents that either happen in the school or to share incidents that happen on the weekend that our officers are encountering to ensure that we're not missing something along the way. And we've taken that approach. Now, we continue to evolve. If you recall, and I know it was mentioned earlier, we've been tested in that. And if you recall, some of you may or may not recall this, we had an incident at Sherman School several years ago after we implemented these changes. We had an individual who made a threat to Sherman School. And we arrested the individual. Probably three years ago, we have arrested him. Why? Did we feel that he needed to be arrested? Well, he made the threat, so certainly he did. But it's important to document it and get that in the system. Do I want him to go to jail? No, but we want him in the system so that he can be held accountable. We don't want things falling through the cracks. What did we learn in that case? We only notified Sherman School parents. We put a blast out to Sherman School parents, and then that traveled. Like, how come you didn't notify the district? Dr. Title at the time, Mr. Tetro, and I had a discussion to say, if it happens to one school, it happens to all. We've got to be better in our communication. We were then tested again when we had this swatting incident in 2015, in October of 2015, where our approach to a swatting incident, meaning that calls and threats were made to multiple schools, our approach was at the time to lock every school down. We didn't know what we had at the time, so we locked every single school down, including the nursery schools. We called in resources from out of our town to help us have police officers at every school. And it was successful. Now, what we learned from it. And steps were taken to address some of the accommodations within the school and some of the problems that were encountered with notifying the schools that they can take a more relaxed posture. But we've adapted from that. One of the things we've learned was that communication from the police to the schools is difficult. So now we have radios in all of the schools that allow the school to pick up a radio and communicate directly with the police department. And we've tested those radios during some lockdown drills. So we are always evolving. Now, let me just gather my thoughts for one second. So I'm not going to be able to gather my thoughts. So I will just end with this. We are here today to hear from you as to some of your concerns. Here's what I will end with. Yesterday, first of all, this has been a trying couple of weeks, and we all know that. Yesterday, the Westport Police Department had some information about a student making a threat. We worked with Westport. We provided officers down to Westport to help them with their threat, and they addressed it, and they've resolved it, at least to the point where it was safe. We put officers at all of our schools because we didn't know whether the threat was here. No indication it would be, but you all would ask, why? It was right next door, why didn't you do something? We communicated with the Board of Ed or the superintendent to let her know what we're doing. And we kind of shared that, that there was really no threat. But we want to kind of let you know, we're keeping you in that loop. Then last night, as Dr. Jones had mentioned, this starts to spread where parents are getting word that there's an individual threatening. Instantly, Lieutenant Waya and his team, some of our patrol members, are evaluating, researching it. And the individual within an hour and a half is in custody from Southern Connecticut State University, under arrest, held up in court, went to court today, and is now in the system to be held accountable for his threats. And then we blast something out. Why? Because we know that this kind of stuff creates some panic and a tremendous amount of angst amongst all of you. And we want to continue to do our best to show you to have faith in us that we're doing the best we can, and at the same time, know that we're sharing that information with you. Sir?
Thank you, Chief. At this time, I would invite anybody to come up to the podium. Just give us your name and address, and if you care to address a question to the group up here, we will do our best to answer it.
Good evening, and I'll start us off. Thank you for hosting this. My name is Jennifer Barahona, and I'm at 74 Cardinal Street. First and foremost, I'm the mother of two children at McKinley. I'm the wife of a teacher at Staples, and I'm the executive director of the Newtown-Sandy Hook Community Foundation overseeing the recovery in Sandy Hook. So as you can imagine, this is particularly emotional for me because I'm getting it from three ways, as a mother, as a wife, and professionally. I don't have the luxury of only thinking about this when something like Parkland happens or Las Vegas or Texas. Or two weeks ago, I got a call from Kentucky asking for my assistance, and I had to Google them before I could call them back because I didn't even know what school shooting that was. Because only two kids died, right? And so that doesn't even make the news anymore. There were some really promising things already mentioned here by you, Phil, by Dr. Jones. I said this two years ago when there was the two-hour lockdown here, and people were worried about providing porta-potties in every classroom and all of that. You know, we can make, and I think the police department does an outstanding job in Fairfield, I really do. We can fortify the hell out of our schools, but the threat will come internally. So if we are not doing the best job we can possibly do with identifying kids, hurt people, hurt people. So if we are not identifying the kids that are hurting and might be a threat, then all of this, in my opinion, is really for naught. We need to have teachers trained. In Newtown, we trained every single teacher in the district in brain health or mental health first aid, if you will. Teachers need to know and recognize the signs. Kids need to know. Thank God the kid at Staples who reported something when he or she heard something, and that may have circumvented a very different conversation than we were having tonight. So I think you're absolutely right, Dr. Jones. We need every parent to be concerned about this and fighting for the budget, not just after an incident like this, but every budget season to say, do we have adequate number of mental health professionals in every one of our schools? What resources do we need? And how can we, as a community, come together with the parents, with all of you up here, to get the job done? Happy to take questions, or if any of you, especially in the Board of Ed, want to address particularly the SEL programming that is necessary to do this.
I'm sorry, your question was you're looking for a comment back from?
You know, anyone who has an opinion on what I stated in terms of the importance of the training. There's a lot of great programs. You know, Sandy Hook Promise was created after Sandy Hook. They offer programming in the schools.
Okay, thank you.
What is the school doing, and what could we do more of?
Would somebody like to speak to that?
Yeah, I actually, I think I'm understanding what you're asking. And when I'm mentioning the operating budget and we're looking at some of those components that are inside the budget, I'll just give a couple of examples. One program that we started this past fall, every middle school, every high school teacher went through the training at the very beginning of the year, is called DBT. And it is training to help us understand and recognize signs and how teachers can interact with students in the classroom to be able to intervene before students are reaching that stress level. But it's a very complex program. So we introduced everybody to it in the fall. Our social workers, psychologists went through the training. They're going through it right now this entire year. Next year, that's being expanded. And that actually runs small groups as well as working inside the classroom. Very expansive. We are adding in this budget a behavioral program. We call it CLCS, which is social-emotional, so that for our children who are in the elementary age and really need a really stringent intervention, that we have that available in our school district, which we have not had previously. Those are just two examples. But we are enhancing our, what we call the SRBI process, which is our intervention process. So if we have students who are struggling for any reason, whether that's academic, social, emotional, that we're really working on fine-tuning the system so that we're working with children, not only in high school, but when they're little and early and intervening. We're doing everything in our power right now to enhance those systems for Fairfield.
Thank you, appreciate that. And just offer my services. I know I've worked with Chief McCarthy and Terry at Social Services, whatever. Us, and I'm sure there's a lot of parents out here, want to be part of the solution and want to be brought into those conversations.
Okay, thank you.
Since the speaker asked if any board member wanted to comment, is there any board member that wants to add to Dr. Jones's comments?
Next person.
Hi, my name is Kathy McElroy. We've been in Fairfield for 20 years. We have two children in the system. After Sandy Hook, I was teaching at 6-6 Magnet School over in Bridgeport. And one of the first facilities, things that they did to change and make us more secure was they changed all the locks on every classroom door and the closet door of my rooms so that you didn't need a key. Anybody can close the door and lock it from the inside. And then I was at a PTA meeting at Ward, and I approached one of the administrators just to say, so do you have something similar in place? And I was told that instead of a door that just locks with a button, you would need a key from the inside. And that key is accessed through the teacher. Now, my concern is if a teacher happens to step out of a room or is not there, and then there's an active shooter, and my daughter's inside a room, I would like her to be able to lock that door with all her peers inside the room with her. And I'm wondering if you have changed that or if you've changed your opinion about that? And what can we do to make sure that in this case, we just have the right locks on the doors?
Okay, thank you. Who would like to take that?
You want to, Eddie?
Thanks for your question. And you are correct that the locks, they are, the doors are locked by a key. And a policy that we're trying to get adopted by all of the schools is that the door handle remains in the locked position so that at any time, if the teacher for some reason wasn't in the room at the time that a lockdown gets called, anyone could grab the door and just pull it shut, and it is already locked.
Okay, I appreciate that because I had asked them about that. And they said, "Well, we don't want kids playing pranks because they might get locked." And I think locking the door so that it can...
And I just want to add to that, it's not typical that a teacher would step out of the room and leave the class unattended, but if for whatever reason it happened...
I could go back to get my backpack.
Right.
And then something could happen. I mean, I just want to make sure that that's not...
But we're trying to get that adopted district-wide.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there another question? Again, just give us your name and address, if you'd be so kind.
My name is Sherry Mauro, and I live at 196 Stevenson Road. And I'm here to make comment about a walkout that is going to occur at Fairfield Ward High School on March 14th and why I realize that safety is first and foremost with keeping these children safe. There's something else I want to address. In reading this paper that has been passed out at Fairfield Ward High School, I find myself taking offense to several things that are stated in this pamphlet. It states that any student who does not participate in this walkout should not be harassed, questioned, or made to feel uncomfortable in any way, shape, or form. Well, this is not happening. Students are being asked in class by teachers to raise their hands if they are taking part in this walkout. This is being done in front of a group of their peers. When they don't raise their hands, they are being asked point-blank by teachers, why not? Some students are feeling pressured to raise their hands because they are worried about the repercussions that will come. As educators, are we not instructed to keep our political opinions neutral when instructing the young men and women in our care? We are also instructed from a student's first day of school that bullying will not be tolerated. Well, when being asked in front of other students by a teacher why they won't participate is a form of bullying and belittling to that student. While I do feel that we live in the greatest country there is, and we have the freedom of speech and the right to protest, I do not feel that the school is the place to hold this. Schools are an educational institution, not a political arena. I'm sure that my time is now up, or I could go on about the safety factors of these kids walking out of that school. But I'm going to make my last statement and tell you tonight that on March 14th, I will be choosing to keep my child home along with a lot of other families who feel the same way about this.
Thank you. Would anyone choose to comment?
I'll be happy to comment on that. You know, I would say from the school leadership standpoint, we are all leading in very, very challenging times. And I don't think that I've ever seen young people mobilized in the way that they are right now. And when this, we didn't call for this walkout. This is national. It's across the country. And when we met as an administrative team, which we did with law enforcement, or Eddie with us as well, you know, we talked about this. And we know that we have passionate young people that if we don't work with our young people, they are going to do it anyway. And it happened in schools across the country just last week, my husband's high school. So, you know, his students came into his classroom and said, at least were very courteous to say, "Five or 10 minutes, we're going to be walking out." And so he had 10 minutes, very quickly on his feet. He's a very experienced teacher. So he was able to talk to the kids about, now, if they're telling you to go to the football field, here's why it's important that that's what you do. Because that's where they're trying to keep you safe. They have a responsibility for your safety during the day. So, you know, we, as an administrative team, reflected on how to work through this issue. And we felt like, sitting down at the table with our young people, who we feel like are very intelligent, articulate, and working on a plan along with our police, where we feel like we can keep them safe. And our community will get more information as we get closer to the 14th. When I even messaged the staff, I said, you know, between now and the 14th, we don't know what will happen. We could be in a different position. But we are working with our young people. And I think the high schools are going to do, and we're talking about high school, are going to do an excellent job of really trying to make sure that they have a place or a zone for a student who doesn't want to walk out. We will have students who don't want to participate. We're going to have students who do want to participate. What we don't want is the students who do want to participate walking out of 70 different doors in 70 different directions. And I think that that was really important for us. And we knew that it was a challenging decision to come out and say, we're going to sit down with our young people and work through it. But that's the choice we made. And again, you know, when you're leading in this time and in this era, the decisions aren't easy, and that was one that's difficult. But we feel like we've made the best decision to work with our young people.
Is there another question? Please come up to the podium.
Hi, my name is Kyle Mangieri. I'm a seventh-grade teacher at Fairfield Woods and coach over there. I just wanted to say that I think a lot of us in the back of our heads are still thinking that this will never happen to us. This will never happen to Fairfield. I don't have that mentality in my life anymore because of a couple of events in my life. First, I watched my firefighter uncle die on 9/11, and it was one of the most traumatic experiences of my life. And I thought I'd never see something worse than that until I happened to live directly across the street from Sandy Hook Elementary School. And I had to live through that for months. And I saw it happen in Newtown. And I see... And I see you guys up here saying that you're committed, but with all due respect, our school, Fairfield Woods, and I noticed it here too, at my classroom, there's a giant window the size of a door. So, you guys can tell me to lock my door all I want, but there's a giant window there. All right? The whole first floor of my school is windows. So, how committed are you to changing the physical structure of these buildings? And do you plan to have an armed guard or officer at every single school? Because I know you said you got four sharing between, what, 17 schools? And quite frankly, sir, that's not good enough. And it does not put me at ease at all. So, what are your plans to change the physical structure of all our buildings so that we feel safe? And I don't care how much money it costs, it's time to put a guard and an officer at every single school. Can you do that? Will you do that?
Who would like to take that?
Well, I mean, you know, look, we had it, obviously, I can understand your thoughts. And don't, at least from my perspective, don't get the perception that just because I say I'm concerned and I care that that's all that happens. I was at Sandy Hook. One of our officers lost a relative at Sandy Hook. I was in Virginia Tech. And we lived this every single day. And whether it be after Sandy Hook or last night at midnight, trying to make sure that we get an individual in custody so that we can kind of relax the community and ensure the steps that we have to take to put extra officers at the school, we do that every single day. And so, these are not just words. They're more than words. And some of, I can't talk specifically to the window in your classroom. I know that there-
School, sir.
So, okay, but what I'm saying is, I can't talk specifically to that. I mean, we have infrastructure, we have people from the Board of Ed, from the district here, that can talk maybe more of the structural issues. But our goal, when we formed our school security unit, was to take a modest approach to increase officers at our schools. And we felt that that model worked. I'm not, look, I'm the police chief. I'm not trying to build an empire, but at the same time, you all are the ones that support increasing a police force or not. I mean, you know, we took the model of approach that we felt was most effective for that. We saw that at times, at Columbine High School, there was an officer at Columbine High School that wasn't as effective. We know that there was an officer at Parkland that currently may not have been as effective as we would have liked them to see. So, we felt that our approach worked. And while you say that there's four officers for 17 schools, each officer is committed to three or four elementary schools and one of the middle schools. Yeah, is that ideal? I mean, they're stretched between the schools? Sure. But we felt that that approach of investing in not only having that physical officer there, but also investing in the communication is going to make our schools safer. So, while there are other opinions, and whether or not the town as a whole, or the body, or the Board of Ed, and everybody else recommends and pushes forward to have an officer at every school, I'm certainly willing to entertain that discussion. But our model has been very effective. And I'm not saying that we sleep well at night because of that model. We don't. But I am saying that our model has been effective to date, and we feel that we're getting a lot of investment from the officers that are engaged in that school safety unit.
Would someone like to talk about any of the infrastructure issues?
Generically, some of the issues that you raised are being addressed, not as a, let me back up. Windows are being addressed on the exterior of building, hardening of, and making entry to the building more difficult. That's an ongoing project. It has not yet reached Fairfield Woods. It will be doing, will be done by the end of this summer. And we're doing that on all of our buildings. Some of the interior ones, we do change doors. It's a long process getting through all the buildings, because there are similar cases spread throughout the district to the example that you held up. There are also programs, processes to actually, some of the windows that you're showing that don't obstruct sightlines. We're working on that by either frosting glass or removing the glass. So, there are a couple of different programs that we're doing that are going through the schools and just can't magically happen all in a week, a month, even in half a year. These have been ongoing construction projects for at least a year or two. Some of them go back, we've done multiple projects since Sandy Hook, even before. So, we're taking the biggest bite that we can each year, and that's part of the $7 million worth of funding that we've been speaking about, that has been committed to upgrading the facilities and hardening them.
Mr. Dwyer?
You probably didn't notice, but at the very end, Mr. Tom Cullen, who is the operations director, was making notes. So, one of the purposes of this meeting is to record the thoughts that you have. And as Dr. Jones and Chief McNamara mentioned, each time we learn something, and then we make other changes. And so, we'll be keeping track of all the notes and the comments and the suggestions, and that'll get worked into our effort to work on the infrastructure of buildings or in the first speaker on the service to students. Any other board members want to make a comment on that particular issue? Mr. Peterson?
Just quickly, this is something that may be asked at some point by members of the public. I wonder if Chief McNamara could talk briefly about response times, since there are not officers at individual schools, whether that's kind of been modeled and tested in some way?
So, we look at our response time as a three to five-minute response. Given the location of where our patrols are, we look at it as a three to five-minute response in an active emergency. So, we gauge our access points towards that three to five-minute response. You know, one other thing to point out here is the concept of buying down risk. And I think it's really important that we back up and really start to understand that from a risk management perspective, because it's really important that everybody understands it. When we look, and when the federal government looks at homeland security and the funding for homeland security, and it's not all about money, it's just the reality of where you can put your resources. They look at the concept of buying down risk. They put their resources where they're most likely to have the most risk. So, when we look at school security and the way in which the police department provides security, whether it be school security or thinking about whether a vehicle's going to drive into a crowd at the Memorial Day Parade, and the resources and the things that we have to do to protect that, it's all the concept of buying down risk. We look towards those areas that are most risky. And from the perspective of school safety, you have internal threats, which I know was brought up before by Jennifer, and the concept of how do you mitigate risks from an emotional perspective? But then how do you buy down risk from a outside intruder? And so, we've put a lot of resources into that. We've added, we've bought down risk by adding officers to a school safety unit. There are many locations in many towns, and I know it's not comforting, but there are many towns that don't have any school resource officers. We've looked to implement a program to do that. And then at the same time, we've talked about infrastructure, trying to buy down some of the risks. People looked at changing locks, we should do that. People wanted armor glass at all the doors. People want officers at every school. I understand that. And our goal is to make our schools safer. But we have to do so in a way that we're looking to buy down risk. That's why, when you look at the incident at Sandy Hook, you look at how risky Sandy Hook Elementary School was. That's why we went to that buying down the risk of entry from the outside of shots being fired to break a glass. We look at that as being risky. We'll look at Parkland. We'll look at some of the procedures on buying down risk, on how the alarms were pulled and what reaction people had to it. But it's always got to be based upon this concept of buying down risk. And we are buying down the risk to our schools to make our students and our faculty safer. And I really, truly appreciate you coming up and speaking, because you proved the point that really should hit home. This is really scary for everybody that's in the schools. It's scary for our kids, it's scary for our students. But we have to understand that as we get the approach to mitigating the risk to our students, yeah, there may be some gaps. And you'll point to a window, you'll point to that, and that concerns you, and it concerns us. And we'll look at some of those ways that we can buy down risk. But it always has to be under this global umbrella of all of the risks and where you can devote the resources to those risks. I know it might not help your answer, help you feel any better.
I think it's time, there needs to be an armed guard of security at every single school.
Sure. I understand that.
It's not going to happen in Fairfield, it'll never happen to me. Put an armed guard at every single school. It needs to happen. Psychologists, all that's great, you need security at every single school.
Okay. Thank you. Is there another question? Oh, I'm sorry. We have another comment from the board? Go ahead.
Sorry. I have a couple of comments. I'm a mom and a teacher. I've been teaching for 11 years in middle school and high school. So, I have a couple of things I want to address. The first thing is, I teach high school, Benell High School in Stratford. And we have two security guards and a police officer. And in the past week, we had a student bring a BB gun to school. We went into lockdown, and the police officer went for the student and secured the building. And I felt, as an educator, very safe to know they were there. My second thing is, talking about glass and infrastructure, my daughter attends the CLC at Burr. The entire building is made of glass. And I have not talked to the principal yet to ask about the infrastructure, but it brings up a good point. I know that the receptionists do a great job of who enters the building, but is there anything in plans to look in the infrastructure of that school? It's just one huge glass dome.
Yes, there is. It's part of the hardening package that I spoke about, and that will be coming, will be done.
Thank you. Is there another question?
It's my turn. Hey, my name is Dian Zhang. I live at 33 Penzi Circle, right next to Osborne Hill. My son goes to Osborne Hill. My daughter is one of his students. I thank you for taking care of them every day. So, you actually talked about the question I'm here to talk about first, because exactly same thing. I noticed Woods has all glass windows in the hallway. And I'm an engineer. I have a PhD in mechanical engineering. I have been practicing building large turbines machinery for the last 16 years. So, for me, looking at our risk, my first response is, could I have an engineering solution to that? So, I'm really glad I heard about the facilities that you were talking about, hardening the school. And one thing I have been thinking is, I also heard Chief talk about, you know, your average response time is three to five minutes, which is actually not bad at all. It's really state-of-the-art in the nation. What I'm thinking is, I looked through this time, the Parkland shooting timeline, and I noticed that from the kids coming into the school, the bad guy starts, two minutes later, he started shooting, and seven minutes later after that, he's gone. So, the three to five-minute response time is good, but I feel it's just not enough to address that. I think officer in school is a great idea. I think that will help, definitely. But if you think about a situation like in Parkland, you have 3,000 students in there. If it happens again in a situation like when students are coming out, everybody is all around one officer or even two officer, maybe difficult to figure out who is there. So, I was thinking about how could we really help from a technology engineering point of view? And one thing I come to, actually, there are two things. But the first thing I come to my attention is, if we can start thinking about hardening the doors and the windows. I think windows is a little bit easier, because if you block the bottom half, then it's very difficult to break and enter from the top. But I feel for the doors we have there, really, the doors, even we have good locks on it, when somebody coming in with a rifle, they can shoot through the lock and get in, get access pretty easily. So, I went online, I did some search on eBay and read about the department, the NIG, the National Justice Institute, whatever, bullet-resistant solution in general. So, my takeaway from that little research study I did is, you know, on eBay, I don't know anybody realize that, a piece of 10 by 12 panel, of bullet-resistant panel, I think police officers might be familiar with those, sells for somewhere, depending on if you buy the steel ones, they're heavier, sells for about $40, $45 piece. And if you buy the lighter polyulacene, ultra-high modulars polyulacene pieces, they are maybe more expensive, $80, $90 per piece. So, I look at my door, and where my daughter goes there, I can block a good chunk of that door with maybe six pieces of those. Let's say we buy the polymer pieces, they're like four, five pounds each, I can block a good part of that door, harden it within, I mean, $500, $600. And if we get involved, we can get that cheaper.
So, if you could please wind up your comments, you're kind of running a little-
I will try. So, my question is really, if we can figure out, I mean, I can volunteer my time, really, that's for all kids' safety. If we can figure out a solution to harden each door, and Fairfield, I think, has 60 rooms-ish, that's, maybe we can do this within $100,000, and we can get parents to donate. Would that be something you guys want to consider? And maybe just give our teachers some more time when our police officer can respond? Thank you.
Any comments back on that?
The window hardening, the exterior hardening that we're doing is for the windows. I understand that some of the products you're talking about, and we did investigations on products. We actually solicited manufacturers to come to us with their products, newer, greater things that we hadn't heard, along with the police department and the fire department. We did some testing, and we chose a product. We're getting that product out into the school systems, and hopefully, it's wrapped up this summer.
That's great.
It includes doors, includes the windows on doors, it includes windows on windows-
That's great.
-to make our buildings less penetrable by somebody from the outside in. We're protecting an entrance into the building, plus our buildings are locked up, everything's locked up. So, you're taking care of the vulnerable part from the exterior to the interior. So, that's a big project that we are undertaking now.
That's great. Thank you so much. And so glad to know you guys are doing that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is it? Did you want to respond?
Well, no, I just wanted to bring something up. I don't know if it might be helpful, I don't know how many people in the audience are aware of the security improvements that we've already done, or the ones that are in the budget that was approved for this year. I know there are some things that we can address, but perhaps if we could just give a brief rundown, it might be helpful, just because I don't think everyone in the audience is aware of what has been done up until this year and what was just approved that will be done in the next school year. So, I just thought that might be helpful.
Some of the things that were done, were done or are being done, we have a communication system that brings real-time information to the emergency responders. That's an after-the-fact kind of thing, but it is very important that we share our documents in an efficient manner whenever we have some type of an emergency. We have a camera system, a quite pervasive camera system throughout the district that is very, is functional throughout all of our buildings. It's online for us, it's not online for the public. Police have access to that in an emergency situation, and also in investig- Police have access to that in an emergency situation, and also in investigations. We have, we've done fencing projects at some of the schools around portable classrooms, which were a vulnerability because they were outside of the, outside of the main school building, so there is questions about protecting access between the remote building and the main building. We're doing the window hardening package, and that's still ongoing. We are doing upgrades to our PA systems, both external and internal. We've done intercom upgrades, simply the fact that it used to be the only place that you can make a PA announcement was from the main office, now we can do it anywhere in the building, that's very important, safety item. Let's see, we are doing things like putting up ballards, or putting up large planters, those will be coming out soon, that was just bid out. We're doing, we've done front entrances, we've done intercom systems, we've done card access systems throughout all the buildings, that was done going on five years ago, which was a quite pervasive system. We're looking at, we have emergency kits in the rooms, we have emergency toilets in the classrooms. That was something that we learned from our 2015 swatting incident, that we needed these emergency supplies because we could be into a long-term lockdown. We were in lockdown for over two hours, and that was too long for many of our classrooms, so we've put supplies in the classrooms. And then there's hardware upgrades that are done throughout the schools that are ongoing, changing the locks, sometimes we'll find about a deficiency that, we've been doing lockdown drills for over 10 years in this district, and sometimes after a lockdown, the evaluation is, we need to change the lock in room, whatever. And we will do that, we do that, probably we get something after every lockdown drill because we're testing our system, and the scenario has changed. Lieutenant Wyer makes sure that we're stressing the system when we're doing different lockdowns. We do play different scenarios to make sure we're testing all different kind of conditions. And as I said, we're, one of the projects is the hardening, everybody was asking about the windows, we are working on that, and that's in progress, several schools are done. They were done last summer and fall, and the rest will be done this spring, summer, and possibly into the fall. And those are, that's, same one. All right, thank you, Sal. Thank you. Is there another question?
Hi, my name is Meg Horn, I live on Noah Drive. I'm an Osborne Hill parent, but I am also a Sandy Hook teacher. All of this is so important, and I strongly believe in most of what people have talked about, but I won't repeat. One thing that's not sitting well with me right now, and I just would like more clarification on, is the locking of the doors. That concerns me that only the classroom teacher has the key. It also concerns me that you're just going to hope they remember to have it locked, and I'm just curious to know, how do parent educators know about it? How are substitutes informed about it? What is protocol? I understand you can't tell me everything security-wise, but that worries me as a Sandy Hook teacher and a mom. I just am curious to know more about that.
That's, you were correct, that there's details that we can't share with you. I can tell you that the key is in the classroom, it's not physically on a person, and that this has been drilled and done for well over 10 years. The training is, we have it multiple times a year, this has been working, it's done The parents are informed of where they are, that's why we do training. But I can't get into the details of exactly where it's placed, or exact protocol on that, because that wouldn't be correct to do.
I understand that. Can you explain to me, how do you know for sure that the parent educators know, and how do you know substitutes are informed at each of the schools?
That's part, that's part of the training. They are part of our training.
Okay.
We also have outside vendors that come in, OTPT people. Nurses are outside, they're not our direct employees, so there's a lot of people that are, they take place, they take part in our drills, so that they are trained in our procedures.
And this is beyond just classrooms? It's also, well, how do I describe, homerooms, I should say? Is it all, you know, all rooms within the building?
Most, every room is lockable.
Okay.
The actual locking system, you're focusing on the key, that's, that's one particular type of lock within very many different types of locks. If you look around here, we could lock down this room, and it's a different type of lock than would be on a classroom. So it's, it's based on the use of the space and the type of hardware that you would need to secure it, while keeping in, keeping in tune with fire code issues.
Mike, I don't know whether this answers your question, but my wife is a volunteer who goes into Fairfield Woods High School every day. She is aware of where the key is in the process, and she's a volunteer, so I think if, if they've reached the training down to volunteers, I think they've made a good faith effort to get it to all of the people who would be in a position.
Thank you.
Is there another question?
Hi, my name is Peter Ling, I live at 22 Dorothy Street. I'm a neighbor of Stratfield Elementary School. I'm also English, and I'm an ex-teacher, and I'm a fairly recent immigrant. I'm quite shocked by the problems that you're facing due to your gun laws. I, first of all, would like reassurances that you have no intentional plans to arm teachers. Secondly, I'd like to congratulate everybody on the stage who's spoken in a very measured and reasoned way on how, on a very, very difficult job under these circumstances. You cannot turn schools into fortresses. The school I live next to is surrounded by trees on raised land, looking down on the school playground. I've never owned a gun, I never will own a gun. I hate guns, I hate people who have guns or use them. This country needs to grow up. The adults in the room are those kids who are demanding for gun control in this country. They're the adults, and we need to look to them to the future. So how are you going to protect the school playgrounds from a crazy person with an AR-15 who shoots from the top of a hill, can't be seen, is flying bullets through the air at little kids playing in the playground? How are you going to stop that? You can't. You cannot build fortress schools. Go to the root of the problem: guns, AR-15s. These are war machines, they should never be sold to civilians. Why are they sold to civilians? Are you at war with yourself? Stop it, America, grow up.
Thank you. Look, I would, I would ask everybody to be quiet, if you want to carry that conversation outside, that's fine, but everybody in this room is going to have one conversation at a time, please. That's why we're all here, we're trying to make sure everybody who wants to gets heard, and we get the questions answered.
Could I just make one comment with regards to arming teachers? I don't, I don't, I'm not in favor of that. Our officers go through a great deal of training in firearms, at least four times a year, not only in how to shoot, the difficulties in handling a firearm, but also the decision-making process when you have a firearm with you. And that is the most important part of any training, is knowing when not to shoot. And you've seen around the country officers being questioned for the actions that they've taken with their firearm, in instances, some valid, some not, and then now we're going to add a layer of teachers to do that. So I'm not in favor of that, and so I would get a big no for that.
From the school superintendent point of view, I'd just like to add, I am not in favor of that either, and I really, truly believe that our teachers have saved more children. If you look at some of the heroic efforts that happened in Florida, because they were focused on children and making sure that they locked their door, and they got them to safety. I can't imagine being a teacher, and you're stepping out in the hall and leaving your children, because ultimately, you have a class full of children, whether they're five or 16. So I just think it would be a dangerous practice for us.
Thank you. Is there another question?
My name is Melissa Held, I have one child at Ward and one graduated from Ward. I want to first thank you for doing this, and for the dedicated service of our police department. I know we're in good hands, and I know you're always looking to improve, but we do need improvement. I have one child, I won't name who, who goes in late to school, or had gone in late to school. It's very easy to walk in late into that school, unannounced, in an empty hallway. I've called that school when there's incidents after school, right afterwards. People filming the students coming out of Ward High School, no one knew what to do. Couldn't get anybody, everybody's absent. My kids went to Fairfield Woods, there were security breaches there. We had someone there the day before, a threat of a local resident who had firearms in their home. We made some changes, there was still access to that building. So doors need to be locked, schools need to be patrolled, and while we don't want a fortress, I am in support of having a lot more security at our school. And so my question really comes down to, what does it cost to add to the security to our school? And is there a task force of volunteers, parents, professionals, that will raise that money? We are a very wealthy state. We have companies here, we have dedicated parents, that money can be raised. I stand here with a child who doesn't feel safe at school, worries me. Our schools are absolutely targets from within and from without. And while we're trying to mitigate that, and you've planned and you've done a great job, there's always that room, but there's red tape, and there's finances, and we can't really sit back and wait. We can raise the money, we can make that difference. I don't want a teacher, I don't want a teacher going to school worried and looking over their shoulder instead of educating my kid. It's not fair, it's not fair to my kid. I went to my kid's elementary school on Sandy Hook Day, and I sat there, and I waited outside. And I said to my child, if you hear something wrong, there's a classroom door to every, every door in Jennings, walk out. And what does my elementary school kids say to me? But I'll get in trouble. I said, that's okay. I said, I don't want my kid to have to think about that, it's not fair. We can't wait. We are so close to so many things that have happened, it is very possible here. So I'd like to ask, what that number is, where that task force is going to be, and I guarantee, I mean, I will be on that. I guarantee there would be people and corporations to help us raise that money. Every school deserves to be safe here.
Thank you. Is there another question?
Good evening, thank you for doing this. I'm a new resident in Fairfield, my name is Sylvia Figal, I live at 25 Twinbrooks. I have a daughter in elementary school. I was recently there as a volunteer, and my question is on the door locking situation, so I guess I'll address it to you, Officer. The previous parents asked about what the procedure is, and also the training, and the follow-up on the training, and you explained the follow-up on the training. My question is on the follow-up of the action of actually doing it. When I walked into my daughter's school, most doors were open, and her door, not only was it open, but on the handle, when I went to open it, there was tape where the lock is supposed to go. So I work in the corporate sector, we focus on follow-up. I give directions, and I put procedures in place to ensure that my directions are followed. You give directions to teachers who are extremely busy educating our children. What do you do to help them to ensure that that procedure is followed? That shouldn't just be on them. Thank you.
Go ahead. So I just want to comment, I'm not sure I totally understand what your question was, but I can just give you a little idea of some of the things that we do to try to prepare teachers. And it comes from...
Sorry, I'll be happy to explain.
Oh, yeah, if you don't mind.
My question is, if the teacher was trained to ensure that that lock is put, the door is put into the lock position, that they can just shut it, what do you do to ensure that, one, that happens, but two, that there's no tape on the other side of the door, so that way if they do need to shut it, it can actually shut?
Right.
Is someone going around and looking for that? Because I was there twice, and I saw that on my first trip.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure. And that's not something that we condone, and we conduct lockdown drills on a regular basis, and part of the lockdown drill is to train staff to make decisions under pressure, but it's also to assess hardware failure like that, or a hardware violation. And we go around and we check each individual door, and it's a labor-intensive process, but we do it, and we're looking for exactly those types of things. And I would encourage all of you as parents, anyone who volunteers in any school, if you think you are observing a violation like that, please bring that to the attention of the administrator. Because we have a lot of schools and a lot of doors, things could get missed, and we all have to work together. So I, you didn't say which school it was from, I hope you did bring it to the attention of the administrator?
I will, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Is there another question?
Yes, hi. Jennifer Caldwell, I live at 40 Dale Road, and we're Osborne Hill and Woods parents. I actually was just at Woods today for a PPT meeting, and I can say that the educators there are amazing. They are really looking after all of the needs of a child, and to sit in a room with four people, you think you know your kid, but then there's four other people who speak up and know your kid just as well as you do, and it's really comforting. But I think we're missing a big component here, in that none of us grew up with social media, none of us. And there is a common denominator in all of these instances, and I think we have to empower the children, because they know, they know who's struggling. And, you know, I think even sometimes as parents, it's difficult for us to keep up with the technology. And just to point out a fact, the American Academy of Pediatrics is now recommending screening for depression at age 11. 11, think of yourself at 11. We need to find a way for the kids to be able to be comfortable to reach out, to identify a struggling peer. And I think sometimes the parents don't even know what's going on on social media. So I want to know, the counseling is great, my daughters had counseling, they're phenomenal. But we need to reach out to the kids and find out, who are they worried about? There's got to be at least 20 kids at Woods that could easily speak to the volume, right? They can pick out the kids that are having a hard time. There's always kids that are a shining star that can adapt socially. We need to find them, and reach out to them, and figure out, how are we going to pick out the kids that are struggling? Because we're not picking out the kids that are struggling, right? They keep struggling. So what are we doing with the children to identify where they see red flags? How are we getting them to help us?
Thank you. Who would like to take that?
I think that is a great question, and we are working with our staff, not only just to train our staff to understand what to look for, but making sure that our psychologists, our social workers, our counselors are connecting individually with students in the cafeteria. I will say, probably one of the best examples where I see great dialogue, if you go into our middle schools, and I know you don't have the luxury that I do, I try to be out in classrooms and buildings every Monday and Friday, I'm in different schools, so I can look at things like, when you're talking about the doors being locked, I'm sitting here thinking, have I hit a door yet where it wasn't locked? But when I visit the health classes, and the discussion that we're having, our curriculum is unbelievable in Fairfield, they're talking about some really intensive issues. And I do think that our children, have adults in our school system, they are telling us. And I do think that our children, have adults in our school system, they are telling us. And I think we are doing, we're never going to be 100%, but I think our staff are really doing an amazing job, knowing our children. And part of that also goes back to class size. And I know people often will think that class size doesn't matter, but it does. Because if our teachers, if it's a high school teacher and they're teaching 90 or 100 instead of 150 students, that's 50 less students that you're trying to communicate with on a weekly basis. And the same at elementary. So I think we are doing that, and I think that our staff are doing some really great work in connecting with students, but especially through our health program. Well, I was just asked, Mr. Tetra was asked, I just mentioned our TIPS line. We do have an anonymous line for our students where they can call anonymously, and they can report, whether that's bullying or an unsafe situation, and they do use it. That's not unusual for us to get a TIPS from any level, especially middle and high school. And I think that is a great resource for our students as well, and they will share about other students that they are concerned about.
Christine?
Just to follow up on that, I think that TIPS is also for parents as well. We need to be part of the equation and a part of the solution. We know our children. I think that if we have a conversation, you know, do you have a friend? Do you see someone who's struggling? And maybe we can reach out to the schools, either through contacting the headmaster, a counselor, or if you don't feel comfortable doing that, using the TIPS line. That is a tool for the entire community. So if you, parent, if you haven't had the discussion with your children about using TIPS, I hope you will. And as a parent, if you see something or hear something, that you also will speak up, because as Mr. Tetra said, this is a town issue. Thank you.
Any other comments? All right, any other questions?
Yeah, my name is Joshua Shalov. I live at 282 Brook Lawn Terrace in Stratfield. Thank you all very much, and thank you all very much for being here. It's very evident that this means a lot to everyone, and your efforts are very much appreciated. I want to take your point that you made up here, and I want to angle it just slightly towards a specific question. So Chief and everyone up here, we've heard some compelling arguments and feelings about the importance of potentially increasing armed guards at our schools. We've heard some compelling arguments and thoughts about increasing the communication pathways and psychological pathways from the kids. We all know that this is a multivalent problem without any kind of magic bullet solution. But what, in your opinion, Chief, I'm going to ask you first, what in your opinion is our greatest vulnerability? We are a bank of considerable wealth and resources and time and unlimited passion to help fix and even revolutionize the aspects of this problem that you feel to be most vulnerable. So point us in the right direction. What do you feel is the greatest vulnerability facing our kids in the school system, so that we can help, perhaps it is a task force, throw whatever money and resources and time we need to raise in order to do that?
Well, first of all, I think our biggest vulnerability is lack of engagement. So I'll get to the, I'm going to actually turn it over to Lieutenant Wyer to talk more of a financial perspective, but I think that one of our biggest vulnerabilities as a community and as a society is that we engage and then we disengage. We engage and then we disengage. So engagement, I think, is really the key, and it's, we have to look towards each other in the process. So as parents come up and say, what are you doing as schoolteachers to address some of the concerns of our students? Why are you not finding that? At the same time, we have to ask the parents, why are you not having conversations with other parents to make sure that we're all on the same page? Same thing with the police department. If you have concerns about the police department and the way in which we do our business, a lot of people do, and they share it, some don't. So we don't need meetings, we need this meeting, but I'm saying we need that engagement on a continuous basis, because it's not, it matters to us. So that kind of continuous engagement, I foresee is our biggest vulnerability, because you know it, you all know it. Sandy Hook was 2012, and we all went up, and then we all kind of went down. We didn't, from a police perspective, because that's what you pay us to do all the time. And yet, would more police officers at more schools be something to consider? Sure. When we had that model, that was the most appropriate model that we felt would address the issues that we had. And we have to be responsible with the community's resources. So we have to engage in a responsible manner, and that's what we did. But I think the biggest vulnerability we have is engagement and continuous, ongoing engagement. I don't know whether I could put, in a matter of this question, a number-one vulnerability that you should raise funds for. I mean, it's worthy of a dialogue more. I don't know whether Lieutenant Wyer would be in a position to really do that at this point, but I do think that...
Well, I mean, it sounds like you're saying that part of our biggest vulnerability is that we wax and wane in terms of our vigilance. And I'm speaking as a community, not just the leadership here. So I don't think you're turning the tables on us, but what you're saying is that this needs to be sustained.
Yeah, yeah, I think that we need to continue that engagement. I welcome these conversations, even though sometimes people can certainly think we should do more or point out some of our failures, and that's important to do. I welcome these, because I think collectively, we all are in this for the same reason, to make sure that your children get from home to school safely. When they're in school, they're safe, that the teachers feel safe when they're in school, and then at the end of the day, they go home to a safe household. So I think that we need to continue these conversations. We are not the keeper of all the best ideas. So we learn a lot of things when we come here, as well as try to provide information to you. But I think probably our biggest thing is to continue this discussion, to continue to move our schools safer. Some financial, maybe, some not so much financial, but some ways in which we can continue that engagement.
Yeah, and if I might, I would add into, we're here focused on the school system tonight, so no question about that, but the, our police officers have the issue of keeping the town safe. And that extends everything from our libraries, to events like the Memorial Day Parade, to events like fireworks. And I've had a chance to work with the chief and our public safety officials, as we look at all those events, and try and anticipate what would happen if something took place in those. So it's part of the kind of, the broader town picture, is to not only address the school issues, but look at the town in terms of what vulnerabilities we have across the board. So the chief's in a tough position of having to try and balance all of that in one pool. I realize we're here about the school tonight, so I don't mean to change the subject, but it's, when you get to the big picture, because you raised it, it becomes a much different issue when you're looking at all type, everything from football games to basketball games to other events that get a lot of people together. If somebody wants to inflict damage randomly on a group of people, that can happen.
Thank you. Next question, please.
My name is Anan. We live at Crosby Street. I'm father of two, one of middles, goes to middle school and high school. So after all these incidents happened, I asked my kids, like I was always concerned, like sending them to school, like I'm seeing them last time, or I was afraid. So I asked my kids, like, what's the major issue, security issue you see into your schools? And my, so this is very specific issue, my son brought it up, so I thought it's good to brought it here, which I also witness every day when I drop them to school. So my son said that anytime a kid sees another kid at the door, at the entrance with a backpack, they just open the door. So there is no student identity. So anybody can, with a backpack, can enter into the school. And when I drop my kids to the school, I witnessed the same thing, like at Fairfield Ward, there are like three, four entrances, like, and kids, people just drop their kids, kids with the backpack just go into the school. So anybody can enter to the school at that point of time with the guns in the backpack and then do anything in the school later on. So how we are going to address that specific issue, that's what my question is.
All right, who would like to take that?
So, you know, we've been having some discussions on how to clean up, you know, it goes back to the prior conversation about how we all peak and then we all kind of become relaxed. We can never, police officers are always vigilant, we're hypervigilant, and as a community, no one wants to live being hypervigilant. And so what happens is, when an incident occurs, everybody becomes very hypervigilant, and it's okay, but as time drifts, people become more relaxed. So, you know, the first selectman mentioned that security is, security and convenience are not the same. Sometimes in order to be secure, you have to be a little less convenient. So we've had discussions, we had a meeting this past week about some of the concerns that come out of Parkland and some of the Facebook postings from, actually from students, who voiced some really articulate concerns that students had with some of the vast number of entrances that Ward High School has, and how we can clean those up and ensure that they're locked, so that they're limiting the number of access points to the school. That is a key point, and it is a valid point. The other point is, you all have to tell your kids, it's important not to open up a door for anybody else. It's hard to do. It really is. You're walking by the door and you see somebody, but if we're going to maintain security, we can have all the glass and covers and doors locked and everything we want, but if we don't train the people in the school not to allow access to somebody that wants to come in unless it's a proper location to come in and they have proper identification, then all that security work is for naught. We used to have instances where teachers at some of our schools would put a rock in the door to keep it open because it was cooler. We've had to kind of change that kind of a culture. So we are working on some of those concerns that you do have.
So just a follow-up question. You keep saying that the engagements go up and down as the time passes, but it goes down. Do you have any specific solutions to keep the people engaged, like so that they are always, stay engaged about the, the security stays at the top concern at the Fairfield School District?
Yeah, I do. Every one of you, in your daily lives, knows what's normal. If every morning when you get up, you drop your kids off at the school, and it's a normal activity, and things appear normal, then that's fine. I think everybody has to always be on the lookout for not normal. We have to change what normal is. What normal is, is you have four entrances or two entrances to come in at the high school. That's it. That's our new normal. Let's establish what our new normal is. And then anything outside of that normal, you have to report it. That's remaining vigilant. And that's remaining vigilant in our lives. If you're at the mall and you see something or hear something that's out of the ordinary, you really should report that. So in order to remain vigilant, you are the best people to tell us what's not normal, because you're going every single day to the schools where we may not be going there. I think they shut my mic off.
They didn't, but if I could, just to add on to that, for those of you that worked in different companies, have been involved in takeovers or mergers, you've seen what institutional culture changes about. What we're talking about here is changing the culture. What we're talking about is realizing, front of mind, you're all here because you're worried that some harm could come to your children. That's the message, that's the culture, that's the mindset that has to be there every day. Think back to our country, go back 30 years, we knew if you fastened your seatbelt, it would save your life. Think about how long it took us, as a country, to fasten seatbelts, when we knew we would live longer and it would save lives. So as the chief said, security and convenience are two different things. So one of the ways to make things more secure is to say, there's one door you come in and out, that's it. So parents, that means when you drop your kid off, you may have to have them walk around the building in the rain to get to the one door that's allowed, as allowed entry. That means our kids have to learn not to let somebody else in the door. That means our teachers have to learn the same thing. That means our staff have to learn the same thing. And that means, as parents, we don't want to complain about it. We should be grateful every time it's more inconvenient, because that means your kids are safer. That's the culture change.
Does anybody else want to comment?
Can I add to that? I just want to make one quick comment, because I don't want anybody to think that we don't control the entrances. I think both of our headmasters, I think one of them is in the very back, Mr. Hattis, we do have two to three entry points in our buildings. We have been, it's challenging to control that. And I just want to give an example to show that we are always working and evaluating, and we're meeting on this issue, this week, next week, as an admin team, just reviewing everything that we're doing. We were having an issue in Ludlow Cafeteria, because it's right by the student parking lot, lots of doors. And even when a teacher's on duty, they knew that they were letting kids in when they shouldn't, that are coming late to school, so the request was made at the beginning of the year, that let's try to alarm the doors. That has worked. So now, if they go to open the door, an alarm sounds. So we're really looking at, do we need more of that as a deterrent? You want people to do the right thing, but they're also 16. And if they see somebody outside and they know them, it is difficult for young people to always do what we want them to do. And so we're looking, are there some other pieces we can do to help them do the right thing as well? And also staff, of course, we're always reviewing that with staff.
Any others? Go ahead.
Yeah, first, I just wanted to say, please make sure you write your name on the list. I'm not sure if everyone has, and it'll just make it so much easier if, I've been trying to take everyone's names, but I'm not sure if I've captured all of them. But I did just also want to speak to what Chief McNamara said in terms of engagement. I mean, right now, everyone here, it's kind of preaching to the choir, because you all came out tonight, because this is something that's very important to you. But I think it's really important to keep that level, and obviously we can't, you can't stay at this level constantly. And right now, everyone is on edge, especially, I think, Ludlow, families in particular, high school parents, but also, it's only two weeks since Parkland. But there are ways to stay engaged without living your life in fear, and, you know, pay attention to things, say things when you see something. Don't talk about stuff on social media, but not follow up, and actually talk to a school administrator or a teacher. You know, because there are some times when people have posted things on Facebook, and I've contacted them, and I've said, well, have you reached out to your child's school? And they say, oh, no, well, I meant to, or I'm not sure if I should, and it's, that should always be something that you should always consider, because, you know, we're talking about very big schools that we have in our town, and there are a lot going on. And if the principals aren't told something, if the administrators aren't told something, they might not know about it, and it might be something that they really should know. So you should always feel like you should be able to reach out to your child's school, to the administrators, the teachers, or someone who you know in that building, to let them know about this. And to speak to what Dr. Jones said, I mean, the budget, the operating budget, I mean, that is something that is so important every single year, and some years, there are huge turnouts and it could be very, you know, passionate and controversial, other years, it's like nothing's going on, and that's kind of when things start to slip. So I think it's really important to continue to stay engaged and involved. There's so much information on the school website. Just try to always stay on top of what's going on. And I know everyone has really busy lives, and you're, you know, sometimes it might not be that easy, but when you have a few moments, take the time to learn about your child's school, to learn about the district, to understand the budget better. And if you have something specific that you're really passionate about, that you feel is not happening in our district, please speak to it, to someone who works in the district or to a board member, and we can get it to someone who works in the district. It's really important that you have that chain of communication that's going on. So just please continue to do that.
Next question.
Yes, hi. My name's Melissa Goodman. I live on Woodridge Avenue. My question is about Fairfield Ward. We were talking about the doors being locked in the classrooms. My concern is that the bathrooms in the hallways have no doors on them. So if there is an active shooter in the school and someone is in the bathroom, there is nothing between the students and the hallway. There's no doors. And to me, that makes it very unsafe and concerning.
Who would like to take that?
So we train for all different kinds of scenarios, and we try to reinforce with students and staff, three different options that you have anytime you face a threat. and staff three different options that you have anytime you face a threat. Your priority is to create as much space and distance, as much distance and layers between yourself and the threat as soon as possible. And your three options typically are, you can run, you can hide, or you can fight. And the sad truth of the matter is that an emergency can happen and anybody can be anywhere at the time, and you have to be prepared to do the best that you can in that situation. So it's not ideal if a student is in a bathroom with no doors, but we reinforce with them, assess your options. Are there ways out? We try to make sure that they know they can go to different rooms that would be available to give them sanctuary inside of the school. But if they weren't able to find a room, then we advocate for them, get out of the building, try to find your path out. And when they do leave the building, we're also establishing pre-designated rendezvous locations where everybody will know to gather off of the property where emergency responders will know where to find them. And there's always going to be that what if, that we don't have a perfect plan for, but we do our best. We try to account for as many contingencies as possible.
Is there a reason there is no door on the bathroom?
That I don't know.
That was a discipline control issue that was done several years back. The headmaster would have to speak to that.
So there's no reason?
It's not every -- it's key gang bathrooms, multi-seat bathrooms that are done almost like an airport bathroom. There's no door on it. And it was done for, to control certain behaviors that were going on in the building at the time. I don't know if it's still a problem and still is needed. The headmaster would need to speak to that.
I just have something quickly to say. Is it because of the students? Because I know my elementary school had doors.
Yeah, it is. It was related to damage that was happening in the bathrooms, smoking, all kinds of things that they couldn't control by just monitoring. So they took the doors off. And for everyone that knows, at Ward High School, the gang bathrooms are like a maze. You can't see straight in. You have to walk in and turn. So we were able to take the doors off, and it stopped a lot of the vandalism and smoking. So that was why.
I just have one more quick thing. I remember when I was in seventh grade and we had a real lockdown. I was in my classroom, and I heard many rumors about different things, like such as, I went to Woods, and such as the school my sister was at, Jennings, was supposed to be bombed. And I wasn't really believing that, but I, my teacher wasn't really reaching out to me, and all she had was email. And I don't believe that there was really, I didn't feel safe at the moment because I didn't really understand what was going on. And I was wondering if email was the only way that my teacher could know anything.
We've actually incorporated a better communication system that we actually practice during our lockdown drills now so that the principals and the teachers are getting very good at quick communication and sharing up-to-date information during the drill so that if a real emergency were to happen, they'd already be ready to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, my name is Mary Ingram. I live on 401 Old Post Road, and I'm a junior at Fairfield Ludlow High School. I want to talk about the lockdown that happened at Ludlow a few weeks ago because I was in gym class at that time, and we could not hear the lockdown announcement over the speaker. So when the police officers came in to see if we were in the correct lockdown position, we were still playing the game during the lockdown. Like, I don't know exactly what would have happened if it hadn't been police officers. And I bring this up because I think that students can provide valuable insight into school security, not just in lockdowns, but as a whole. So what do you think you can do as the Board of Education to ensure that these students' voices are being heard on a regular basis about concerns, not just with lockdowns, but school security as a whole?
Great, thank you. Who would like to take that?
I'd like to just mention one thing. I do just want to mention, we are meeting as an administrative team, and one aspect at our high school that we're looking at is having student forums with the headmasters, with the deans, so that they can hear directly from students about some of those issues. So that's in the works right now.
Great, thank you.
Anybody else like to answer? Please.
One other thing that I would hope students would note of themselves of, because it's an organization already set up, is that you do have your student government and you have a daily homeroom. And so that would be something I would hope that someone who had experienced what you just said could reach out to, you know, a student body president or whatever, and say, maybe the student body president, somebody with the student government, could organize a survey, could organize an opportunity for feedback. And that that way, there would be a logical chain of that can be organized. I'm sure that the student government representative would meet regularly with administration at the school. But that's the fortunate thing there is that you already have an organization in place, and it would be a shame to not bring this to their attention of, you know, you haven't asked us, how about that as the forum through which to do it?
Do you think that that forum could be used to also speak with school security and communicate through school government to school security?
Well, what I think would be an excellent idea is you go to your student government and say, we want you to organize this. I mean, the point is, you already have leadership in place that's representing the student body. So whether you advocated for a survey to get information, in which case, you know, obviously, you can offer to be a part of that process as well. Maybe you already are, I don't know. And then to say that as part of that, we'd like, you know, sort of what Mr. Tetra suggested, or excuse me, Dr. Jones, that idea of, and then we would like this to go more than just getting our feedback. We'd like this to be more of a conversation, you know, even something like this. And what would be the best way to organize that and the best use of student time that could have the most number of interest, that students have the opportunity to avail themselves of that? But again, I think you have a already embedded format and process there, and I think it would be wonderful for, you know, you to be a part of raising that issue.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
I would like to second what Mrs. Cannelly said, but I would also add that we have representatives from the high schools to the Board of Education that sit at the board table with us during our regular meetings. Now, the, you know, in the normal course of events, these, the updates that we get are about sporting events and assemblies and other sort of things. But if students want to use those representatives as a conduit to bring their concerns to the board, we will absolutely hear them. They take a great priority in our meetings. And I know the students that fill those roles are very committed. And I, for one, would not be averse to kind of turning that role into a way for student voices on security matters to be heard by the board.
Ms. Jacobson?
Just following up on that idea as well. I was just wondering, is there student representation on our school unit within the police department?
No, we don't have any organization like that. However, I do want to offer that on request, I speak at faculty meetings constantly. I have no problem coming to speak at a student forum. So you invite me, I'll be there.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Next question.
Suzanne Mesko, 123 Ragate Road. I think we need to take a deep breath because it's the quality of the security in our schools from where we started after Sandy Hook is immeasurable. We've put in a great deal of security systems. We have security lockdown drills, things we've never had before. So while we might be trying to find the golden ticket to find the answers to questions that we don't have right now, we really need to stop and commend ourselves in our town and our police force and our administration for the amount of effort that was taken after Sandy Hook, to look at as many details as we possibly can to keep our schools as safe as they are. You know, to get into Fairfield Ludlow High School is a ringing of a bell, showing an ID, going through a system. To hear that they had numerous drills last year to solve the cafeteria situation during a lockdown and was done over and over and over again until they knew that they had trained the students to know what to do, they had made sure that the administration knew what had to be done. And I have to commend the administration because I'm one of those parents that has the hotline to the principal, and I don't think anything's too small to bother Mr. Hatzis about. He strongly probably disagrees, but that's what has to happen. And in fairness as parents, we have to, especially of high school students, you know, I made it very clear to my son, school day ends at 2:25. There's no leave in that school to 2:25. I don't care if the keys are wrangling in your pocket, it's not happening. We have to tell our students that they have to take this seriously, not just after a Parkland, not just after Sandy Hook, okay? And as parents, we have to have discussions with our kids. We have to. Because what we're finding, at least what I'm reading, is that in Parkland, a lot of people knew a lot of things. And unfortunately, the chain of communication didn't get where it needed to go. So my question, after all of that, is the process. You know, I read about Parkland, how guidance counselors were involved and social workers were involved and teachers were involved. And so I'm concerned as a parent to say, what is the process? You know, where does it, where does the chain go as far as when it's brought to the next person, whether it be social work or whatever? How does that process go? Does it end with the administration? Is there a requirement the administration notifies the police? How does this whole process work? And I think that's important for everyone to understand. I'm not, I don't want to go into privacy issues. I know that's a big part of this.
I think we've got your question.
Thank you.
Who would like to address this?
Are you, if you're talking about the TIPS line, when the TIPS come in, there's a whole team of people. Or you're talking about how we crisis manage for a child.
Right. So if, I mean, if a teacher says, this child, I don't want him in my class, or kids report that a kid has an issue or whatever, how does that, how does that process work within our schools?
If they go to the principal, and if it's a dangerous situation where something has been reported, that's going to go immediately to our officer, to Mr. Wile. And we act on it immediately. And what happened last night, when the TIPS came in, it was an issue that went straight. I called him, I think, and woke him up. It's, it goes straight to the police. If it's a child who's in crisis, which sometimes it's something like suicide that's coming to us first, then we're working with all of the resources that we have within our school system. The team is coming together, principals, counselors, psychologists, we're looking at, and obviously, working with the parents. We will run through what we call a threat assessment when we think that a child is at risk, and we look at what's happening with that. At our high schools, we also assess at the beginning of the year to see who is at high risk, just to help, I guess, put kids on our radar that maybe somebody hasn't shared or maybe they're new to our school system. So we have all sorts of components in place, and it really comes down to, again, working with kids on an individual level. And you have a team of amazing educators and administrators in our buildings who are crisis problem solving for these students immediately. Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Next question.
Hi, I'm Janine Alexopoulos. I live at 22 Partridge Lane in Fairfield. I have three children in Fairfield schools. I have a son who's a sophomore at Fairfield Ludlow, a daughter who is a senior at Notre Dame High School, and a sixth grader at Roger Ludlow Middle School. None of which, none of them feel safe. Not a single one. Three to five-minute response time is not good enough, considering that within the first three minutes, most of the killing in an active shooter situation are, most of the people are killed at that point. So that's not good enough. In terms of the hardening, the windows and the infrastructure, my children and I have been driving around, you know, in our travels throughout Fairfield, at the middle school, at the high school. What are you going to do about the fact that Ludlow is completely open with windows? That's where all of the children eat their lunch. It's completely open. You cannot possibly harden all these soft targets in a timely manner for any parent like myself to feel that their children are safe. Every single morning, when I drop my sons off, when I drop my daughter off, I am scared to death. And they're smart, and they're going to do what they have to, but they shouldn't have to. And I really don't care about anybody's comfort level when it comes to guns. All I need to know is that there are enough good guys with guns there to respond to the bad guy with gun, with a gun, and that my children are going to come home safe. Since when is it making our schools a fortress to provide them with adequate security? You have the awesome responsibility of having our children all day long in, under your care. You need to protect them. So because there's no way that you can harden all these soft, the windows at Burr, the windows at Ludlow, the middle school, Riverfield was great about point of entry, but the entire school is lined with windows. You could shoot right into every single window and just mow kids down. What are you going to do about all this? Because I need to know as a parent, and my children deserve to know as students.
Thank you. Who would like to take that?
Yeah, I think that, yeah, we live in a very unsafe world. And, no, sure, you know, so I have to be quite honest with you. I think that anything I say right now is going to be met with, that you're not going to be happy with anything that I say right now.
Well, try me.
Well, no, I did. But I'm just saying, I think we live in a very unsafe world.
Right.
And we look at ways in which we can keep our community safe. And while we secure our buildings for a three to five-minute response from a law enforcement officer to get there, so that we hopefully can deny entry for three to five minutes so that an officer can get there. I wish I didn't have to have these conversations. I get it. I understand totally what you're saying. I wish we didn't have to have these conversations, but we do. We have resources within the community to keep our kids, to keep our community safe. And frankly, the police are responsible for your kids 24 hours a day, not just during the school hours. So from our perspective, we have very limited resources with what we can do, and we've taken approaches to lessen the impact or limit the ability for somebody to get into the schools to hurt your children when they're in the schools. We've trained teachers, we've secured the exterior buildings, we continue to do that. And you're absolutely right, it does take time to secure these buildings. And then we train our officers to respond as quick as they can to eliminate the threat. And when we know about a threat prior to a threat, we take action to prevent it from happening so that it kind of rears down the level of angst that parents feel. So we are working towards that. I don't, I don't know how to resolve that three to five-minute response time.
You know, we have armed guards at the schools like the, like the, like the good man suggested that makes total sense to anyone who is rationally, thoughtfully considering this, who's been watching the coverage, who's been seeing how school shootings are increasing. The culture is changing, and you need to align with that because you're not. They're increasing, it's breathtaking, the amount of school shootings we've just had in 2018. And you have to align with that, and you're not. We need armed guards at our schools. It's not making it a fortress. It's making sure that my children and yours get home at the end of the day, that they're okay, that we don't have to get that call. It's horrible. It's a horrible feeling. We need our schools to be fortified. Our children need to be protected. They're not. They're not right now. And just do something about it. Whatever you have to take money from, to take, take police off of, you know, tree trimming duty and put them in the schools, whatever you have to do, put, whether it's security or police officers, a good guy with a gun to stop a bad guy with a gun. Because these things are going to happen. You can't stop them. But you must, you must protect our children.
So I will, I will add to that. First of all, there's diverse functions that our police officers perform. So while you mentioned tree cutting, that's a whole nother thing, and I understand that that would be an easy thing to look at, but that's a whole different matter.
Whatever it is.
What? No, but just listen, just hear me out for a second. And I go through a budget process. I don't want you to think that I'm not aligned with reality. I really don't want you to think that. I live this every single day, and it's not about me, it's about the police officers. We live it every single day. We train for situations where we have to go in and step over injured people to attack a threat. We're disgusted when we see reports, and obviously, they'll come out and we'll see what happens with the way in which people respond to incidents. So we look at that, we discuss that, and we train for that. I have a budget process to go through like anybody else, and any other department in town has to go through a budget process. After Sandy Hook, we put forth a proposal to increase our police department. After Sandy Hook, we put forth a, a proposal to increase our police department. The first time it was increased really significantly in years. We are in a budget process now. And so I would encourage you to evaluate our, our police budget. And this is not about throwing money at things, but obviously, I have to say it because people think I'm against having police officers. I, you're talking to the chief who is responsible for the police. So if the whole group of you said, "Let's get more police," why would I say no to that? But I want you to understand that that doesn't change the, the formula. It does not change the formula that we do take school security very, very safely. I mean, seriously. We take that.
It's lax.
What's that?
It's almost nonexistent. It's lax.
Okay, well, I, you know, you know.
And that's not good enough. All our kids are in your schools. It's not good enough.
But so.
It's lax. It should be as tight as could be, considering the culture, and considering that, that nothing is more, just like Andrew Pollock, the father of Metal Pollock, made a wonderful point. We protect banks, we protect, there's the TSA, it was the TSA after 9/11. Why aren't our schools protected after all these school shootings? It's, it's absolutely, it's beyond frustrating. It's disgusting, really. It is appalling, and it needs, it needs to, to change. Whatever you have to do, there is nothing more important, nothing in Fairfield is more important than protecting Fairfield students in school. Nothing. Nothing.
So, so, so one of the other discussions that was had after Sandy Hook was that people didn't want to make the schools a fortress. And we've heard people in the audience come up and talk about they don't want to make schools a fortress.
Do they want their kids to live?
No, no.
Oh, come on. Do you want, do you want to, you, you don't want to live in a fortress, but you don't want to, you don't want to, you don't want to protect the students.
Excuse, excuse, ma'am, please, ma'am.
You have to, you have to find, you have to find a balance here.
Ma'am, please, ma'am.
Give the chief a chance to respond. He was nice enough to let you talk. It's now time to let the chief talk.
Right.
All right? And I am going to ask the people in the audience to please not yell out. We're trying to let the people that come up with questions, ask their question and get their answer, so everybody can hear it. The discussion is not ending tonight. There will be a lot of time to continue this conversation. And if we're going to affect any change, we're going to have to continue the conversation. Chief, go ahead.
So there was a lot of discussion after, after the incident at Sandy Hook. And there, there is a mixed feelings within the school community. There is, about whether or not, and we've heard it this evening, whether or not you want to make the schools a fortress. And, and we've mentioned, you've mentioned TSA-type security, which would entail searching backpacks of all students. And that, there's a group of people that feel that that would be intrusive, that they don't want their students to be searched, and then if they, if they exhibit signs or behaviors that, that might lead to a secondary search of some sort, or that, that's the, that's the reality in the discussions that we as a society have to address. I'm not against you, and you have to know that. I'm really, truly not against it. I know you do. This is very emotional, and I, I truly understand it from the bottom of my heart. But we have to have these discussions. We do. And I agree with it. But we all have to have the discussions of how do we change and live in a society that we really have to talk about these things. I am open for these discussions. I know our school unit is. If you'd like to have further follow-up discussions, I, we can. But I'm not against you, I'm really not. And we are coming here looking to listen about the concerns and trying to come up with, with reasonable solutions that everybody agrees to. Because your opinions will be different than others, and, and other opinions will be different than yours. But as I said at one point during this, we are all here trying to work together to make sure that it doesn't happen. And, and you have to know that when you leave here. If you take nothing else away, know that, that that's the case. We might not have those solutions that you want to hear right now, but we, we, we are not against you in this process of trying to make it better. And if, if I can be of assistance in doing that, I want to help do that.
I understand. And it's not, it's, it is an emotional issue, but it's also a very common sense issue.
I understand.
And it's, and it's something that needs to be, if, if, if a shooting happens tomorrow, Fairfield schools are not prepared. That's, that's my point.
Okay.
So, thank you. I, I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Next, next question, please.
My name is Caitlin Clarkson Pereira. I live on South Pine Creek Road. I grew up in the public schools here in Fairfield. I'm going to shift gears a little bit. I work in the School of Education at Southern Connecticut State University, which is the largest teacher prep program in the state. So my students, over the past couple of weeks, the pre-service teachers have been asking me what they can do in a crisis situation, if they're in the classroom doing observations and an internship, student teaching, because we know in those moments, just like in many other moments, they are seen in the role as a teacher by the students in, in the class. So, and I don't want this just to fall on school districts, so what can the teacher prep programs in the state do in order, when we're educating our students to become teachers in, in K-12 programs, what can we do to assist in that area?
Can anyone take that? Go ahead.
I, I think we would welcome a conversation, first of all, if, if that's something that your program is looking to do. But it's really, I think, giving them exposure to the drills that we do before they ever get out in the classroom. And it, and if there's a way to work that into their curriculum, and maybe it's a safety component for them, get them to go out and watch what a lockdown looks like. What is the, not when they're, the, the children already perceive them as a teacher, but when they can really observe and see what that teacher who's in that classroom, what are they doing with the children? And, you know, how, what are the procedures that are in place? And just understanding what it looks like from a lockdown perspective. And it may just be doing a mock one. They're, you know, for school districts, sometimes we go through mocks and we try things, and schools may not be as receptive if they're not actually in the student-teacher mode to do that with you. But having a mock situation for them and inviting school people in to actually say, "This is what we would be asking you to do," I think could be hugely beneficial for young teachers.
Okay. Thank you. If, go right ahead.
Just as a follow-up, I also, I teach high school in a Fairfield County school. And I, with new teachers, I would just absolutely reiterate and support what Dr. Jones said, that they're going to be going out into varying districts that will have varying levels of professional development when it comes to new teacher preparation. And I think, I'm not about to impugn any district in terms of that level of preparation. But to say that a new teacher gets overwhelmed in those first three days where they are expected to learn everything, oh, yes, and prepare for all of the new classes and their classrooms, et cetera, that anything that a teacher prep program can do in the way of, here are the things to ask about. If you don't feel that you are, you know, fully prepared in the event of the fire drill or the lockdown drill, that to ask that before the, before your students ever show up, these are the things to make sure you know. You know, what are the procedures in a medical emergency? What are the procedures in this? Who is the person to call if they're in a house system, if they're in an elementary school? But actually, having a prep sheet of, make sure you know this, you know, by day three as part of your prep. And if you don't feel it's been covered well enough, or there's any assumption that it's already known, I think that would be invaluable.
Ms. Pichko?
I'm actually part of the new teacher prep program in my school district. And one of the things I teach them is make sure they have a mentor and that they understand the protocols in the building, but to keep in constant contact with the guidance counselors. Because if you see anything or you feel that you need to discuss a student, don't hesitate. And so I stress that, because in their first year, they're completely overwhelmed. And very easily, a, a class could go by and they, they could miss something.
I think what we're talking specifically about here is more of student-teachers transitioning into the role of teachers. But the State Department in Connecticut requires four semesters of time in the classroom before they can be certified. So the reality is, with all the teacher prep programs we have in the state, we have a lot of 19, 20, 21-year-olds who are in the classroom who are not in the role of student-teachers. So I would absolutely love to have that conversation with you, because I think there's ability to, to make some ground there. Thank you.
Good. Thank you. In taking a look at the time, it's 10 of 10. We're going to, we're going to wait for Mr. Hurley to get to the end of the line.
I thought it was the lady behind it was the last person.
I would ask that, you can't see anybody behind Mr. Hurley. I would ask that the remaining questioners, please keep your comments brief. It's, we're approaching 10 o'clock. Everybody's sat here for quite a while, so I'd ask you, A, please try and be concise, and please don't repeat things that have been said so far, if you could. And with that, next question, please.
Hello, my name is Roxanne Galahad from 40 Green Lawn Drive in Fairfield. I have been active in the PTA for a long time, but I'm new to the Fairfield area. Just to give you a little background from where I came from, I came from a very wealthy school district. Our PTA was able to raise 2.5 million the last year I was there, and they raised 3 million the next year. The power of the PTA was incredible. And the, the most powerful people in our community were the PTA members, because they were able to deal with and work together with the teachers and the parents and hear the things that they really, really wanted to get done, and they made sure that those things were done. And I wanted to say that after Sandy Hook happened, we did have a big discussion on how we were going to protect our schools. We did look at giving a gun to all the teachers, because we were a unique school, that we had the finances to do that. Some of the things that we became aware of was that there were bulletproof backpacks. We were discussing those things at the time. There's bulletproof clothing. I just wanted to say to all of the parents here and all of the teachers that we need to come together and that we need to, their, the businesses will fund us. They will take care of us immediately. They want to be a part of this and be a part of the solution. And I wanted to say, one of the things, as over the last four, five years that I've been really actively looking at how to save our schools and protect our kids, I have come to realize that we need to come up with a plan that helps protect our kids in the first three minutes of an active shooter. I want to know what is the plan for the first three minutes? I want to know if we're going to have bulletproof things on the walls, on their, on the lockers, so the kids can grab something to protect them? And I need to know that with all of these practices, all these drills that are going on in our schools, they're practicing what to do if the kids are in the classroom. The majority of these kids are being shot in the hallway. Are we practicing how to protect them in the hallway, in the cafeteria, and in the gym? And I just really want to call a lot of attention to this. And I've looked at some of the things out there, and they're, one of the things I really liked was, there's a program where they have a light above all the doors. It's red or blue lights on every single door, so the kids could, could see, "Okay, this is a dangerous area, I can't go here." But they have a, a blue light that they, that means that they can go. And I, and I have a whole list of things that I've looked at, and I would really like to ask. If we could have someone from our PTAs.
Ma'am, if you could finish up, you've, you've gone over your three minutes there.
I'm sorry. If we could have someone from our PTAs be on the school board and to deal with all of our parents, because I really need to know that all of our parents have a voice, our teachers have a voice, and that they are able to make a change. And we need to change fast, because we have brilliant people in this, in this community. And I know everyone wants to help.
Thank you. Some good ideas that I think we need to continue to talk on. Next, please.
Hi, John Platner, Churchill Road.
I'm sorry. Ms., forever, please.
I did just want to just say, and I'm not sure if everyone is aware of this, but the members of the Board of Education are up here. We're, we're just everyday people like you. We live in Fairfield. We're not paid employees of the Fairfield Public School System, and we're all parents. And the majority of us have children in the Fairfield Public School System right now and are PTA members. Many of us were PTA officers, PTA presidents for many years before we became board members. Those of us who don't have children in the school right now will have children in the school fairly soon, for quite some time, or have had children in the school for some time. And we're all PTA members or will be PTA members as well. And we do have a Board of Education liaison to PTA Council. As a high school parent, I still attend my child's school's PTA meetings every time they don't conflict with the Board of Education meeting, as do many of the other people at this table. So there's definitely a lot of communication between the PTAs and the Board of Education, and we're always open to more. So just wanted to let her know.
Ms. Vitale? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Just one other thing, too, that we've done for, actually, since 2012, we set up a yearly PTA visits. So Board of Education members, I'm the board secretary, so I reach out to all of the PTAs in our district and offer to have a Board of Education member come to the PTA to speak to any issues they wish to. Some years, we, everyone goes, other times, it's just a couple of PTAs want to have us. But again, that's another way to keep the, those lines of communication open, and we're happy to do it even more, you know, because we're here and we're, we, we have children in the schools, too. So we, we care very deeply about your children and our children as well.
Ms. Vitale?
I'll be quick. As a past PTA president here and at the high school, I, I would just say, I agree with you, but in terms of the PTA, if you're not an active member of your student's PTA, your school PTA, please, I mean, go. Start at the very smallest part that you possibly can, make a difference in the building that your children are in, develop those relationships with teachers, with administration, and the information will flow up. We are very, very committed to PTAs. We, as was said, a very good working relationship. So just get involved. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, just to be clear to everybody, we'll let the gentleman behind Mr. Hurley also be included here. But I'm going to ask everybody, please be quick with your questions on this. We're trying to be respectful of everybody's time. Everybody's sat here for a good two and a half hours now.
Hi, John Platner, Churchill Road. Just a couple things. One, on prevention. First, it sounds as though there is a backlog of, of enhancement items. I just encourage that we, we get one list submitted to the, to the next budget request. I'm sure everybody would be comfortable with that. Two, on potential more resources, that should be a separate request, right? We have one-time expenses versus ongoing for potential additions to the police force. Third, nobody's mentioned the GVRO laws that Connecticut has in place, gun violence restraining orders. It sounds as though you've got good communication between school personnel and police when there is a potential violent incident. But even before that, obviously, you also probably have a list of people who are, or kids who are potentially at risk. Do we also have, maybe not immediate at-risk issues, but do you also communicate with the, with the police force? And are there, are there interviews that take place with people who are at risk to get ahead of potential issues? And then if the commissioner could talk, maybe educate and make sure that both the school personnel and the parents are aware of the gun violence restraining orders to remove guns from potential houses that are at risk? And then it sounds like, so from, so that's prevention. From a response perspective, I want to make sure that it is the policy of full locked doors to prevent entry, and that we have a, both a reward and a discipline system for both teachers and students who are violating that policy. If that is the case, that schools remain, will remain locked for the school day, that's a, you know, that's, I think, step one, just keep the doors locked. And then run, hide, fight, that's, that's sound policy. It sounds like that's in place, too, so thank you for that. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody wish to comment? No?
Okay, so I'll comment first on the, the ability to seize weapons. So we have the ability, if we feel that somebody has possession of weapons and creates a risk to themselves or others, we will have the ability to get a restraining order to grab the weapons and seize those weapons. We've used that quite frequently when we, when we have information that not only students, but also, and very infrequently for students, but more, more on other matters, where somebody indicates a threat of violence, and we'll go to their house and we'll seize their weapons from them. And then a court has to adjudicate whether or not they get their weapons back. As far as the relationship between when the threshold is met, that a student is brought forward to the police in the schools for discussions, I don't know what that procedure is, so I wouldn't be able to speak to that.
So we have a very good relationship with all of the school administrators. And my team, they have a lot of face time at all of their assigned schools. And it's a, communication is a two-way road. We make sure that we're accessible 24/7. If my phone rings at 2:00 in the morning and it's a principal, I answer it and I make sure that I don't get off the phone until we have a plan for the next day if there's some kind of concern. And that's when something's at crisis. some kind of concern, and that's when something's at crisis level. But I think the day-to-day discussions that we have are really where the power is, because we're educating each other on what we know as a police department about certain families and certain children, and the schools are educating us on what they know about their problem children. And we know what red flags to look for, and we don't wait for five red flags. When one shows up, that's when the discussion starts.
If I could just, the police department did a very exhaustive report on each school and made recommendations on what should happen at each school. The funding that was approved for this coming summer, $350,000 roughly, was to implement the final recommendations of that report. That does not mean that the school district or the town will say, "Okay, we're done. Don't have to look anymore." We are constantly looking to say, "What's next?"
Ms. Pitka?
I know that many people at the tables here recently attended Gun Safety Prevention Forum, and one of the things that was brought up, Connecticut has some of the best gun safety laws in the entire country, and two things that were up. So that was good information for some of us, you know, that didn't know that, but also to learn about it.
Thank you. Next question, please.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Torres. I live on New Hampshire Avenue. I have five kids who are either graduated or still in school here, and I also have a grandson who attends school in Fairfield. The email that was sent out last night, I have two children who attend Ludlow High School, was very vague, and my daughter and my son, who has autism, was extremely apprehensive about going to school today. And I did not send them because I felt that, I felt that the email really didn't give you much information, and I understand that things were just unfolding and, you know, but I was, I just felt very unsafe because it kept saying that, you know, "The school is safe. The school is safe." Well, you just put this guy in custody. How do you know the school is safe? How could you positively 100% say there was no connections to other students in the school, that there wasn't more people involved? That's scary for me to send my kids and then for my daughter to do, express, like, you know, she woke up at 5:30 in the morning, you know, to get ready, and she just looked at me and she started crying. She said, "I'm terrified." She is scared to go to school every day. My son with autism, the last time the lockdown happened, and they, you know, it was a long period, he sat in a closet for two and a half hours. I didn't think it was possible for my son to do that, because he does have autism and he's, you know, but he did it. And I just, there wasn't even much information when all the parents gathered down at the university, at the Quick Center, you know, we were trying to get information from officers, from, you know, everybody, and there wasn't much information out there. And, you know, the man questioned that was, you know, placed under arrest. From my understanding, I could be wrong, he was released on bond. And there hasn't been much follow-up as a parent to say, "Okay, we have gone through his computers. We have checked all of his social medias," which, you know, I'm sure you have, but as a parent, it's really, really nice reassuring to hear that, yes, we've gone through all of his things. We've visited his house. We've made sure he doesn't have a ghost gun or a gun at all, you know? And my other thing is, I was looking online at a few things, and one of my friends has, you know, grew up in Fairfield, and I did as well, I went to school here, was, there's a program, an ALIS training program, and I don't know if that's used here, and that was my other question, is, is that something that's put in place? Are our kids trained to do that? I mean, I don't have a great deal of information. I've lost, you know, I've watched a few videos on it, and it seems to be, you know, pretty interesting, and I just, you know, I don't get the feeling that my kids are adequately trained to fight for their life if they had to. You know, I get, you know, seek shelter, and, you know, they get that, but to actually, to be prepared to fight for their life and how they could do it, and grab a fire extinguisher or grab, you know, something other than just a textbook to help them, you know, if they have to, fight for their life, you know? I mean, and I have great faith in the Fairfield Police Department. Honestly, I give you guys...
Ma'am, ma'am, you're kind of at the end of your time here. Can we answer some of the questions you've asked so far?
Sure.
Thank you. Would somebody like to address some of those questions?
I'm going to do my best to remember all of the things that you asked. I want to comment on the arrest that we made last night. We can never say anything with 100% certainty. We evaluate the information that we can gain, and we're very, very thorough, and we were very thorough last night. And our investigation revealed that it was an incredible threat, but we want to make an example of somebody who thinks it's okay to use the words, "I'll kill you." And we did. We did that. We can't control what happens after somebody goes to court, but we did everything that we could within our power, and that included an arrest, that included a psychological evaluation at the hospital, and that included physically transporting this person to court. What happens after that is kind of in the court's hands. We were very, very confident that there was no conspiracy, that this was an emotional conversation and an emotional response, and that there was no threat to the school once this situation was resolved last night. As far as ALIS training, there are mixed reviews because it's kind of a cookie cutter program. Our unique approach is to look very closely at our population and at the uniqueness of every one of our buildings and the uniqueness of each faculty, the uniqueness of each student population, and that's why we're so engaged. That's why we have a dedicated school safety unit that just thinks school safety, Fairfield School Safety, 24/7. And we train the teachers and run hide and fight, and we do very complex lockdown drills to try to prepare for all different sorts of situations that are very specific and unique to our buildings.
All right. Great.
Thank you. If we can go to the next question, please.
Hello, I'm Kristy Vitale. I live on Longview Avenue, and my question is actually sort of more targeted, and it's about planning and interactions with our special needs population. So all of these lockdowns happen, and we have kids like her son and like my daughter and lots of, lots of children, although it may be only a 10 percentage of our population. As a parent of that child, I am not communicated with to be told what you are doing specifically to help those kids in situations where you're having a lockdown, or further than that, preparing them for when a lockdown could turn into an actual situation where the police are entering the room. So, you know, there's been lots of videos of Parkland, and one particularly inspiring autistic boy who described his experience. So what are we doing, first of all, for our kids who are in that situation, different from what we're doing for the rest of the kids who are having these lockdown trainings? And secondly, how are you communicating that to the parents, or rather, how will you be communicating that to the parents in a more effective manner?
Who would like to take that?
I can comment on some of that. All of our schools have unique populations, and the first one that comes to mind is we work very closely with Giant Steps School. Giant Steps is a school that is all special needs, and they work with us on the same types of lockdown drills that we do in the public schools. So our advice to the staff is always, know your students, know their needs, and especially when you're dealing with a student with special needs, you have to know what their common influences are, and you have to make sure you know what their medical needs are, what their medication needs are, and they have to be prepared, that if they're locked down for an extended period of time, they have to be prepared to be able to deliver. The question does come up a lot, what if I need to move a child with special needs? Well, in the moment, they have to do whatever they can, and I've even said to a teacher the other day, if you have to pick up that child and carry that child, then that's what you have to do in the moment.
I think, I think that my question then would be, where is, how is that being communicated back? I brought this to my PPT this week, and we put in place some things, some things were already in place, but again, those things were not communicated to me. I get a note home that says there was a lockdown today. Sophie did great. What does that mean? Was it a lockdown where she had to move from one place to the other, and she's physically disabled? And the teacher raised that question, and she was raising it to administration, but she's now in sixth grade while I wasn't, that question raised long ago. And again, just that communication point for how are we preparing the students for that feeling when police are coming at you? If police are entering a room? How are we preparing the students themselves?
Dr. Jones, did you have some to add?
We do work directly with the families, obviously, through the PPT process, but I would say even beyond that, for a lot of our students who have special needs, where they really need assistance, where you really see it is in our student to staff ratio. And if you go into a lot of our classrooms where we have four children with significant needs, there are four adults there. And this district has a student to staff ratio that takes care of our special needs children. That does not happen everywhere. And so that adult that is working with that child is going, they're doing those drills together, and it really is about a partnership between usually the para, it can be a teacher, but usually it's a para and the child, and they're working through that process. Certainly, I hear what you're saying about communication. I will share that with our Executive Director of Special Education, and we consider what we can do to continue to communicate better how we're keeping our special needs children safe.
Something so that the school administrators are approaching the parents with this, probably before we're approaching them, would be ideal.
All right. Thank you.
I do have one other idea, and that's just a quick idea, and it is having an opportunity maybe once a year for parents to participate in a lockdown in a mock situation would be fantastic. The feeling of that two-hour lockdown that my daughter was in was a dark, completely dark, windowless space for two and a half hours. And while as parents, I wouldn't want to sit through that at all, but having, getting that feeling for parents would be huge in being able to help their children then deal with the questions that they have when they come home.
All right. Thank you for that. Next question, please.
Hi, I'm Melissa Vallejo. I live on Sunny Ridge Ave. I'm a teacher in another school district, as well as a parent of three boys. One of the things that didn't come up was portable classrooms. I'm most concerned. My son has been in the portable classroom two years now, and he was in a portable classroom in 2015. The kids stayed in the portable classroom during the lockdown, and I'm concerned about if it's a priority for security with that, because I feel like he's on an island of his own. We're talking a lot about the schools and safeguarding the schools, but I look at that portable, and it looks like it could blow over in the wind, which I know it can't. So I don't know much about it, but I am concerned, because they're going through renovating. So I think the portables are there to stay for a little bit longer. Secondly, as a teacher, we have something in our school, every teacher has something called a SARA button that we wear, that if we were to be in the hall and we had an active shooter, we push the two buttons at the same time. It directly goes to the police station. I'm wondering if, what kind of, especially like a teacher in a portable, how do they get, you know, to the school or to you guys? Is there a button? Do they have a phone? I don't know.
There is a phone that can access the intercom system, and one of the first things we did even right after Sandy Hook was we really emphasized the importance of wherever you are in the building, if you're outside of the building or if you're in a portable, everybody needs to be able to communicate with each other. Everybody needs to be able to hear what's going on. But I would like to ask you again, what's the name of that button?
It's called the SARA button, and we've had them for a couple of years, and in our school, they say, you know, you don't have to wear it, but you could wear or keep it hidden in a place close by. But I mean, if I'm walking through the building and I don't have it on, what's the, what's the point?
I just wanted to tag on to what the lieutenant said. Each classroom has the ability to call directly to 911. It's not only intercommunication between classrooms, between classrooms to the main office, ability to make an all-call, it's also the ability to get right to 911 to make that initial call. It's not get to the head secretary or get to the principal to make that call.
Right. So as far as the portable?
Mr. Dwyer?
Inside the portable. On your classroom.
But is there some extra security for these portables? I know there was a fence that went up around them, but if these, if my son, who's in that portable, is in there and there's an active shooter there, are those a priority for the windows, the doors? Because they're on their own. Do you know what I mean?
They have the same, same door hardware, lockdown hardware, they have the same facilities that you have in the main building in that separate building.
So there's nothing extra special for the portable security?
They also have the fence around them, too, so that, you know, that's, you could call that an extra...
Relative to the portables. At one point, we had 61 portables in the, in the town. The town made a commitment to eliminate them. We're down to our last school, Mill Hill, that has five portables, and the plan that we're putting forward this year is to remove those portables and build permanent classrooms. Once that is done, that's the last school building that has multiple portables at it. And so we have made a commitment to eliminate them, not only because they're not a good quality teaching space, but because they are separate from the main building.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Next question, please.
Good evening. Brian Markham, Round Hill Road. I don't have a question at all. I just have a comment to make. When I heard the information last night, as much as I hate to admit, I came across a lot of news, and I check news for Facebook, and I jump on Facebook, and there's the news, right? And our kids are reading Facebook as well, as we know, and they probably use other stuff that I don't use, Snapchat and all this other stuff, that I don't know how to use. But the stuff last night that I read on Facebook, by other parents pointing fingers at other children in the district, and then the parents calling people out, are putting their own children at risk? The behavior by parents, to me, is appalling. We, as a parents, have to do a better job of being parents. And I'm just, this is boiling at me, what went on last night. So I know some of you are probably in some of these groups and saw the same stuff, but I don't know how to address this, but, you know, the morale of parents and what's going on, the kids learn from them, right? And then they bring the bully into school, right? And then the kids put their kids in jeopardy because they, they know who their kid, you know, they know where their kid is. So it just really got me upset and pissed off, and I just wanted to say that. I don't have a question. That's all.
Thank you for, thank you for hanging out here to tell us.
Michael Hurley.
Mr. Hurley, our final speaker.
And thank you for the opportunity to have the last question. Michael Hurley, 94 Gray Rock Road, Southport, Connecticut. I'm a member of the RTM in District 10 and a member of RTM Leadership, of course. Thank you for hosting this event tonight. I came here to listen, and I think I really learned a lot. I have a great deal of respect for a police department. I think that the plan that was put in place to keep our schools safe post the tragedy in Newtown was a very, very good plan. For me personally, I really do feel as if what took place on Valentine's Day in Parkland, Florida, is a game changer, and I would, as a member of our town's RTM, which is our legislative body, we essentially, we approve budgets, if it came to us, if it came to me, I would support the additional funding to put a police officer in all of our schools. And on the RTM, we disagree about a lot of things, and we do ask a lot of tough questions. It's not a Democrat issue. It's not a Republican issue. It's about our children. And as Chairman Dwyer said at the beginning, when it comes to school safety, I think we have a pretty stellar track record of supporting things. So I would have to imagine that almost, if a fully vetted plan came from the Chief of Police, who we all have an incredible amount of respect for, I think it would, I think it would be very, very well received. So my, one quick question is, in watching the news coverage and reading about everything that took place down in Florida, I believe there are some school districts where the principals, the headmasters, the administration has discretion as to whether certain events are reported to the police department. It could be an instance in a certain school district where a child brings a knife to school, but the school district or the principal doesn't feel as if that needs to be reported to the police, you know? Perhaps he was just, you know, doing something foolish as a child. What is the protocol in our school? Does the administration, the principal, the headmaster have a certain degree of leeway as to whether something that's more sort of low-level is reported to the police or not?
Yeah.
Dr. Jones, we'll take that.
It really, it comes back to what's happening. If it's a gun, or we're talking a knife situation that meets the standard of the law, then no, they don't have a choice. They have to report that, and we have to go through certain protocols. If it's a regular disciplinary issue, it's something a child says, let's say two kindergartners, you know, get in a fight, and a kindergartner says, "Yeah, I'm going to kill you." The principal would not necessarily elevate that to, to the security level. It's all, it's based on the situation. If it's a gun or it's a knife, it's a situation that comes back to the state law, and there, almost every state in the United States tells us that and governs that very tightly. Connecticut actually is one of the few states where... Connecticut actually is one of the few states where even expulsion for things still exists. They're actually very, very strict on the disciplinary side for students, especially for high school.
Thank you.
And thank you for waiting as long as you did to address the mic tonight. We're done with Q and A from the public, but would like to give the board of ed members a chance to comment on anything they've heard tonight if they'd like. Please.
Well, only that, we, we did have some members who came for portion B of the agenda. So, no, but only that I, I would hope to get to that quickly, but, all right, thank you.
But if any board members wanted to make a final statement on security in school, speak now or forever hold. No hands are up, Mr. Peterson? And then we'll move on to B.
I'll, I'll be very brief. I do want to respect the people who came for the other items. I just want to say, as someone who went to school in this district, is now a parent in this district, heard a lot about windows and, and, and the feeling of not being safe. And I understand that. And I understand kind of having seen the tapestry of things that have happened over the past several decades that weren't a different place. But I also want to say that it's been my sense, having kids in school during the Sandy Hook crisis and seeing the aftermath of that, we've raised the baseline. We were talking about a new normal before. I, I feel like our parent community and our children are very resilient. And I think, I hope that our community and our kids and our school district will be able to adapt to any changes that we make. I think if we approach things very thoughtfully and respectfully.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Then we'll get to the town hall portion this evening. So I'd ask anybody who has a town hall type freshman, please come to the mic. And we will let our board of ed members address the questions.
I don't know if there's anybody here but me.
And again, same guidelines. We're trying to keep things down to three minutes. If it could be quicker at this hour, that would be appreciated.
Okay. So I don't have anything to say on the safety other than I will say this, I'm a teacher at Ludlow. I feel extremely safe. Thank you to our police department. Thank you to our administrators. I know there's a lot you guys can't say, but I live it day to day and I feel very safe there. So thank you. I am here, back again about the lower level students in math. So I did a little more research, and this is what I can tell you about other school systems that would be educationally equal, I would say, to Fairfield. Greenwich High School has the opportunity to take three years to cover Algebra I and Geometry. Darien has a pre-algebra class called Applied Math. Jill Borlow has a pre-algebra class called General Math. New Canaan High School has a math Level One. Ridgefield wasn't able to figure out what it was, but it looked like they have a readiness course of some sort. Weston offers a two-year algebra class. Westport has a pre-algebra class that they call Applied Math, and Fairfield has nothing. And I again beg you, and I know you're going to tell me, go to the administration, but the administration says, go to the board. So that's where I'm at. I'm not the only teacher, but I'm the only teacher willing to sit here until this hour to talk to you and then get up at 5:30 in the morning and go in and teach my students. So I, I've been to board meetings. I've heard board members say, we need this, and it happens. So maybe our board members could tell our administration, we need this because we do. We're not serving these kids that are coming out of eighth grade, not ready for Algebra I. And then they do fine in geometry because geometry isn't algebra. And then they get to Algebra II and they don't do fine. And I'm going to leave it there. You don't have to answer me. I want you to be able to go home, but I waited all this time. I had to at least save my stuff. Thank you.
Any comments from the board?
They don't need to.
Okay. Next comment or question, please.
Hi, I'm Kathleen Joy Ross, 682 Beach Road. I just wanted to mention at a town hall level that we've gone through a lot in terms of our security needs. And I can't stress enough the technology aspect of that. So what I want to ask you and to think about as we go through all these votes that we have to vote on is how are we stress testing our technology so that we don't have a blackout instance happening in Fairfield that will cripple our grid of communication with our parents? So how are we going to stress test our technology and we know that these switches are 10 years
The non-recurring capital budget actually has a two-year plan. I think it totals about $2 million. If it's the same technology that you're talking about to replace, because I remember the comment being, we're at the end of our 10-year life cycle and we need to replace these. So the RTM recently approved those capital non-recurring. So about quote, "half" will be done this year and the other half next year. As a board, we do watch the technology budget and try and stay ahead of it. And I will say, I think we have a very good IT director who is constantly looking to make sure that we stay current because the, as soon as we get to where we need to be, students bring in 5,000 more devices and we need to upgrade again. So we are trying to stay ahead of it.
Yes. And in lieu of the, the gun circumstances and the amount of devices, like gizmos, which are watches that kids are going to be wearing now because their parents are worried sick about the security in the schools, we have to have the Wi-Fi enabled in order to have the capacity and the uptime for our security systems. That's going to impact the entire grid. So my ask to you again, and I can't stress it enough, how are we going to stress test the current budget in lieu of the current events? And now hearing what we need to do in our schools, it's planned for, however, the capacity is not. We're never planning enough for capacity. So let's think about that. Let's push on it. And I'm asking all of you at the board to push back on the administration to make sure that we have that covered from a security perspective. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments from the board? All right. Next question or comment?
Peter Ling, 22 Dorothy Street. What fantastic school system you have here. It's brilliant. I have three daughters who've been through that school system from elementary level to high school. I'm happy to say that all three of them are really smashing colleges. One is at UConn in her final year as an actor. And my twin daughters are at Skidmore and Wesleyan. So I'm really proud of your system. I think it's brilliant. Thank you all very much for all the work you do. You don't, the teachers aren't paid enough. That's the only complaint I would have. However, there's always a.
You think the board of ed members are paid too much? Sorry? You think the board of ed members are paid too much?
They're not paid at all, right? No, that's really just the, the beginning of what I wanted to say because I think it's important to say it and it's not said enough. Okay. So here's my complaint. You've, you've regenerated two schools in the time I've been here. One is Stratfield Elementary and the other one is Riverdale. And I'm sure on the inside, you've done a really great job. Unfortunately, because you've needed air conditioning on those schools, you've put them on the roofs for everybody to see them. These are not jewels in a crown. They're ugly monsters and they do no service to the character of the school. In fact, they de-dignify it. Public buildings like schools should have dignity. It shouldn't look like factories. People remember their schools for the rest of their lives. And if they had to look at that from their playgrounds every day, I'm afraid that's what they're going to remember. If you look at Riverdale, you now go down into Riverdale because Riverdale's in a, in a sort of hollow. The first thing you see is this giant monster of a mechanical air conditioner. That's not the way a school should look. And I hope that when you come to look at Mill Hill, you act as a body to ensure that if there are mechanicals or air conditioners going onto your new schools, that they are covered or better still, integrated into the design so that you, people know that they're not even there. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Well, I just did want to speak to just a couple of issues regarding that. My understanding is that the, the location of the air conditioners have a lot to do with, with the cost and just that's the best place for them to be from a technical perspective, even if it's not an aesthetic one. And there are plans, actually Holland Hill is up next and they, they will be air conditioned and then Mill Hill will be as well. And another thing to keep in mind is that once the board of education approves the educational specifications for a building project, so we say, this building's going to have air conditioning, that's in the ed specs. And then the first selectman has a building committee, which he forms and which is approved by the other town bodies. And then the building committee is the one who actually does the project and the, the nuts and bolts and the details of the project. So, and then they just come back to us once the, the project is done. So it's not within our purview or the ed specs to say, don't put the air conditioner there. But again, my understanding is that considering how expensive it is to put in, period, that the choice is made to put it in a location because it makes the most sense from aspects other than how it looks.
I understand that. Thank you. These things are not meant to be seen. They're not designed to be looked at. You've put them on the roof, which you obviously have the place for them to go, then there are many methods, and they've been in practice for many years now, to screen air conditioners very effectively and integrate them into the design of the building. That's what I'm asking for and that's what I think you should be looking at. As far as the building committee is concerned, there needs to be oversight. They're not trained in these matters and, you know, they've got to come in on budget and they've got to be advised by architects and, and they're under pressure, obviously financial pressure. But this should be something from the get-go. There should be something about how does this school, what is the character of the school? What is it going to look like? What are people going to, what's in their memory? I'm, I'm sorry, I, I think it's terribly important, this. I think you can't just go on producing shoeboxes with a giant air conditioner on top. It's really ugly. And, you know, every morning when you come out, get out of your car, take your kid to school, that's what you're looking at. And it just, you've got the chance to put this right and you need oversight of building committees. And frankly, so the town planning and zoning committee, who knew about these air conditioners, didn't do anything to stop it happening or to screen them as they should have done. And that's where it's gone wrong. And, you know, frankly, if it costs a little bit more money, it's so worth it because the character of the town, the character of the town Fairfield is signified in the quality and the character of, of its public buildings like schools.
Thank you. Any further comments from the board? All right. Are there any further questions or comments?
I hate to follow somebody with a British accent. It always makes me feel so stupid. They always sound so brilliant, don't they? And they are, but anyway. Frank Sohagian, 20 Chelsea Street, Fairfield. I've been here before, as you know. Eighth grade middle school teacher over at Woods. And what I want to speak to tonight was about what's going on in the middle schools as it relates to, maybe first even giving some education to some of you folks who are younger parents who don't know necessarily what's in store for you. And I do know you understand there's a team concept or a crew concept depending on the school. And just so you do know what goes on in the middle school for teachers, we spend, it's more than just the fact that the four academic subjects of language arts, social studies, math and science have the, have all have the same students. So that's, that's considered the team or the crew. But I want you to understand, if you don't know, because I didn't know as a parent before, actually before being a teacher, and this is my eighth year, I never knew this, that teachers, we spend hours a week talking about the kids. Hours. Informal settings, by the way, not just informal settings. Formal settings, whether they be team meetings that we have or meetings with the guidance counselor, formal setups and there are scheduled meetings. Other meetings called EIP where we have to have planned for some intervention for some students that are not necessarily have, and special needs or planning things for trying to find success for them with, who are struggling students. So we spend a lot of time. And what really struck me is we think about what's going on and it's really not connected to the last piece, but it sort of is as well, you know, the last segment. And by the way, first of all, thank you guys. I mean, you know, you guys are amazing. Your dedication blows my mind, really. I mean, I know, as, as Mr. Tetra said, you don't get paid. You put incredible hours. You're still here. You're the last ones here. I see all the stuff that you do on the side. I see you at the RTM meetings. I see, I see you at the board of, board of selectmen meetings. The dedication of you folks is really amazing and I really thank you for that and commend you. Thank you for the town. But anyway, coming back to, coming back to what's going on in the middle school. So we talk about the kids a lot. And then we have these kids that, that we all have, a few of them. There's not many of them. But there's always these some that you go, you know, I've tried such and such. And you talk about it with not only your own team teachers, you'll even talk about it across the hall with other teachers. I got this kid, you know, I don't, I just don't know what to do. And it's usually a kid who has social, emotional behavioral problems. And we used to have something in this town about 20 years ago. It was a long time ago. It's called a guided learning program. Now, that's probably not, it probably needs to be updated for sure. But it was something that the, the teachers who had been around a long time ago would say, yeah, you know, back then we had guided learning. It was something, a place for these kids to go that was a safe haven, was a place for them to go, for them to be actually with a special education teacher. And that was part of the special education program. And I think it needs to be updated today. And I wish Dr. Jones was still here because kind of speaking to some of the things that she's doing. And I commend her a lot for the paths that she's going down as well. But these kids would, you know, they try to find a way for them to be successful academically too, because always these kids are not, they're not successful academically, obviously, if they're struggling behaviorally and socially. They're struggling in all different types of ways. And now we have, we really don't have anything. I don't say anything because we have a social worker and we have a guidance counselor. But we need something more organized and formal structure for these kids. It's necessary. And now I know we have, she talked about something going on in the elementary schools and I know we have the ESS program in the high school. And the ESS program in the high school I know is going, is going to be brought back inside. But there's nothing in the middle school. And it's a real void. It's a real void because these kids just don't go to high school and this becomes a problem. You know? They don't just go to high school and it becomes a problem.
I think we're approaching a three-minute.
Sorry.
If you could wind up here somewhere.
Yeah, I'm the last one, so, right. I'm, I'm wound up. So I, I looked at the last thing, I looked at the budget. I don't see anything in the budget for this. So I suspect there's no plans for next year. But I would argue or urge you strongly to think about doing something for these kids. So.
And again, thank you for staying as long to make your comments. Any comments from the board, Ms. Pitco?
I don't know if you're aware, I taught middle school for 10 years before I switched to high school. And I, the one thing I say all the time is I miss the team dynamic. Because in high school, I don't get that collaboration time to talk about my students. But one thing I have been saying to Mr. Mancusi is that I hope that he works with Dr. Jones to come up with something. I've worked in three school districts, Hampden, Region 16, and now Stratford, and they all have something different like guided learning. In Stratford, they have something called the Zen Den where the students can go, that's a high school model, the students can go, and those students benefit from that.
No doubt.
They struggle in a regular classroom setting with 24-plus students sometimes.
Can't handle it. They just cannot handle it.
And it, they get more of a personalized learning, something that's tailored to them. Maybe in the end, they get a capstone project that's more tailored to them or an internship. But I've always found, and this is the only thing that helped me in high school, was just keep going to the guidance counselor to try to work with administration for something for that student. I'm hoping that Mr. Mancusi will hear or at least I can send another email. I agree with you. I think that every student, we weren't made to all be in like machine factories sitting at chairs. We don't all learn the same. We're all going to become something different in this world and, you know, that I hope that we can change the model for them.
Any further comments from the board? All right. Then it looks like that is wrapping things up for this. All right, then it looks like that is wrapping things up for this portion. I do want to personally thank you all for coming out. I think this is a great format. I think it's great of you to all be here. This is a great turnout. So thank you on behalf of the town and residents for, for taking time to do this. And I will turn it all back to Mr. Dwyer.
And thank you to Mr. Tetra for serving as, I'll say, double-duty moderator, because I don't think he realized what he was signing up for when we originally scheduled this.
Not since 2011.
And although there's about an equal number of people out in the audience who's up at the table right now, please pass on our thanks to roughly a couple of hundred people who showed up out of concern for their school district and their child, and we thank them for coming. And with no further business, I'll call for a motion to adjourn. Mrs. Cunelli, seconded by Mrs. Gerber, raise your hand. All in favor? It's unanimous. We are adjourned.